We're going to open the Selectments meeting of January 14th. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. A couple of minutes? Did we have? No minutes, correct?
No.
Number two might be a little bit of a discussion.
Mm-hmm.
Number three is open the Monday, May 6th, 2019 Annual Town Meeting Warrant to close Monday, February 11th at 12:00 noon. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to ... in the meeting? Seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Do you want those extra warnings in there?
I think we should. It's not people's first rodeo to put this warrant together. Everyone is now going to be well aware of the time to get it done. You have several weeks until February 11th at noon. It comes in with comments or a summary. If it doesn't, fork over the money and pay for your own special town meeting, or you wait until next May. Remember the words of Scott at our last ...
He said the ...
Yes, at our last coffee chat.
So, articles in final form along with non-political descriptive summaries with no greater than 150 words must be physically in the Selectments office by the above referenced warrant closure deadline. Failure to satisfy both requirements will result in your article being omitted from the 2019 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
It's pretty clear.
Are we good with that?
I'm just concerned because sometimes there are actual things that hold things up, whether it's going to legal or, you know, where we don't have the language because they're still, planning is still working with KP. They meet, what, twice a month? You know, I'm concerned about being that drop dead with it.
But then we're going to run into ...
I absolutely, I absolutely get that, that we, but you're opening it today. People, if they're lucky, will find out tomorrow, and that won't be everybody because it sort of trickles through. You don't have a great way to even notify people, all of our boards and committees.
Besides email.
I just ...
Well, pending the discretion of the Selectmen.
Well, email. Can you drop, can you print out the letter and put it in the box is too?
That's always done. I'm just saying, Pen, do you want to add some wiggle room language into the notice?
I would like some wiggle room, you know, if it's just blatant, we're being, you know, but there are sometimes good reasons that this takes time.
So then we could just leave it at our discretion.
It's always at your discretion, but whatever.
But I think, I think, you know, we can be, we can make a decision based on each case. You can say it's due then and the expectation is, but we have a lot of volunteers who sometimes also have other things going on in their lives. Like I said, planning meets maybe twice a week and a lot of their ...
Twice a month.
Or twice a month, and a lot of their stuff is complicated, but necessary.
What if we said you need to let us know immediately if you don't think this will be enough time? Something to that effect? No?
Pete, we have a month. We have a month before they need to be in a month from today, six hours ago, seven hours ago.
It should be plenty of time.
It should be plenty of time. Because again, you give a wiggle room, you give a wiggle room, you give a wiggle room, then we're stressed, we need to get it out to KP law, then we need to get it back, then it needs to get in the mail, and then once again, people are saying, "We don't have enough time to go through this." So we're right back to where we were of not enforcing, "You all know, you all know what's coming, get it in." So I'm, I'm going to hold fast on the 11th.
Okay.
See, for me, you do have a little wiggle room though, because it's still two months from February 11th before May. It's February, March, April, well, in fact, is it February, March, April? It's three months.
It has to be in the annual town report.
Why not?
Or maybe it doesn't have to be, but it does actually.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they have to put that together, too. Why don't we stick to what Peg suggested, and then if we have someone who will let us know that this is an impossibility for them, that they need to let us know?
Do you want to give a window for that?
Not a window.
The 11th at 1:00 p.m.?
I just don't want to be backed into a corner. I don't want to be backed into a corner where something comes up that's important and they're two days late or even a week late and, you know, we're saying it can't be on the warrant because of an arbitrary deadline.
Okay. Did you make a motion, or no?
For what?
I made a motion to open the meeting.
She made a motion.
You made the motion.
To open the meeting.
And I seconded, and then we had discussions.
Okay. So, are we going to leave this as is? I don't have a problem with this. I think that really a month will be fine, and if it's not, then hopefully these, whoever needs to get, needs a little bit more time, needs to contact us directly.
Do you, and you want to say you want the ...
Can you put that in an email?
You want that, okay, that could be an email.
Just in an email. Is that all right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right.
Need to vote? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that a yes?
No.
That's a no.
Okay. Well, I thought that would be short.
It is.
We have a 7:05 appointment, discussion regarding consolidation of departments/functions, and we've got lots of people here to help us talk about this. Why don't, if you have ideas, or you have ideas that you'd like to throw out first, perhaps that would be the best way to start? I'm looking for, you know, what your thoughts are.
Well, I just think all of these individuals, or at different times, I've heard several things. One is, you know, facilities and highway doesn't seem to be meshing very well as a job position, and an inordinate amount of time is being taken up with facilities by our highway superintendent, who is supposed to be primarily highway. We also have the transfer station. I've heard numerous times that it's really hard for a, an elected, not full-time board to manage the transfer station. The other thing is we have both highway and cemetery handling mowing, where, you know, most of the cemetery commission handles the policy and procedure and the plots and those types of things, but highway is, whether it's through contract or whatever, handles all of the maintenance on things that need to be mowed. So there's, there's just a lot of things that, that seem to be, they've come up at various times, so I thought it might make sense to get people in a room to talk about how we can maybe fix things or change things so that things are functioning more smoothly.
Well, I mean, I'm curious to hear what's not working from building, highway, Board of Health, and cemetery, and transfer station.
Okay.
Well, you can't fix unless you know what the problem is.
Right.
So, I mean, we can sit here and the department heads can say, "Oh yeah, we should consolidate, but all these folks are working it," so that's where I want the input from.
Okay. Anybody want to share? I'll ask you, Dave, just, how's it going?
So, as I've said many times previously, the building facilities manager part of this job is very consuming. The last few weeks haven't been too bad. It seems like it runs in a cycle.
Yeah.
I don't, I did not come prepared very well tonight for, to discuss this, to be honest with you, but I have kept track of time on how much I devote to buildings and what I devote to highway, and it's, it's about 40% of my time is devoted to buildings.
And it's, is it basically this building?
A large part of it is this building, the second is 1870. Between those two buildings, it takes up a lot of time.
Okay.
The heating and stuff?
Mostly heating issues.
Yeah.
Water here has been a problem lately. Overhead doors, major problem.
You want to get them shot?
Yeah, and it's never at a convenient time, it seems.
Right.
And the other piece, I think, is that because of the way we've structured this, we're reactionary about, you know, we fix things when they break, rather than looking at them and maintaining them in such a way that we're not always reacting to what's broken.
We have an administrator search, or maybe administrator coming in?
Yes.
Should this be, like, triggered a little later, and that would be part of his purview?
Or her.
We could talk about it a little bit.
Or her.
Or her. Exactly. I'm sorry. You're exactly right. Or her. No problem there. I don't know if, you know, it's great to talk about all this, but...
Right. I think we just wanted to see whether it's something we needed to get a handle on.
Emergency.
You know, right away.
Right.
Or if we can continue the way we are for the moment. If there's suggestions, though, this is one I want to hear about them. If Board of Health has anything, or Cemetery, if you have anything? I know your, one of your issues is space, correct?
Yeah, we need some space to put stuff out on our greenhouse.
Yes, I don't know the direct issues as far as Cemetery.
Yeah, I mean, that's a logistical thing. Certainly not, not a big rub, you know, in the ointment, it's just what it is.
Mm-hmm.
We've had discussions several times before, and every highway super who's been involved in it has, has gone away. Glad that he didn't take the cemetery on because it's a great deal more than it appears to be. It's not mowing lawns.
Okay.
It's burying people on weekends, and it's contacting undertakers and families, and it's just an awful lot more to it than mowing lawns. So, we, you know, it can be done, but I would venture to say, when you actually hire someone to do some of that, which you'd have to do, you end up paying a great deal more than we do when we contract it out, not even thinking about benefits and all the rest of it. Can be done, but we're spending a lot, we'd be spending a lot more money than we are right now.
Well, we're looking from, for the people who are in, in this job to give us advice on how they think it would work best, so...
As far as the Board of Health is concerned, and the transfer station, because that's primarily what would be on the table to talk about, basically, things go pretty smoothly. The board takes care of, you know, the bills and making arrangements for certain things, and sometimes the arrangements with contractors and so forth start with Pete, who's done some, done some research to get the ball rolling.
Mm-hmm.
And other than occasional snafu at the transfer station with somebody saying something they probably shouldn't, it really hasn't been, it hasn't been bad at all, and I'm not sure, we're certainly open to talk about things, but I don't feel like we're under the, any pressure or gun to change the way things work.
Okay.
It's possible that they could be made better. I'm not saying that, as of right now, as we sit here, without a much bigger plan to work off of. I think we're good.
Well, I think that was, that was one of the things, is maybe to come up with some way to look at how we go forward and maybe start the conversation about a better way to move forward.
And that's where other people will become involved, because being on the board for many years, I mean, when things aren't broken, we don't fix them, but that doesn't mean there isn't a better way either, so, and I think that's what you're referring to. We're open to.
Yep. Okay. Bob, you agree?
Well, just David, I agree with Paul, but David, what is your worth, pressures? I mean, you, you're seeing more stuff than we are on the top. What do you need? I mean, as a, what do you see that, you know, you need help with, because we're all willing to help.
As far as things are going right now, it's, it's going okay, but I can see come summertime when, you know, everybody's, all my guys are out mowing. I mean, they spend a considerable amount of time mowing. I did put money in my budget for next year for part-time employees, seasonal employees. I'm not sure if we'll get anybody, that's the problem. You know, if we could, if we could take 20 or 30 hours a week away from the guys on their mowing, of course, last year was a bad year because of the rain situation, so, you know, you have to kind of play the weather game, too.
Now, we've got no, no snow, so ...
Till Saturday.
The water table will be down.
No snow, no problem. Conservation areas, can they be put back, like, like, you know, laid back on, or can you get some help on conservation land? Because it's a lot of mowing that we never did before, but...
Perhaps.
Yeah.
You know, that's something, too, that doesn't necessarily have to be done every year unless it's a field that's being used on a regular basis.
There you go. Yeah.
So you'd have to check in with conservation about that?
Right now, balanced.
Yeah.
And some other thoughts were just, you know, maybe we do get somebody on your staff training for some of the building stuff, or, I mean, just tossing out ideas, what, you know, what pieces would it help to sort of scatter or ...
Well, Jim does help me a lot in the buildings.
Okay.
Jim Spinn?
Mr. Spinn.
Yeah.
So maybe, you know, maybe it's possible to move some of that over to him and either hire for something else, or get him better trained in some of those areas. I don't know. Just start thinking about it.
Okay. Is there any other input? It helps a lot, it helps a lot, you know, to hear particularly what the issues are, or if there are issues, or, and, you know, not just in a meeting, but other times, you know, phone call, email. So...
Just keep an eye on it.
I think at this point, we could have another meeting at some point.
Yeah, I think perhaps maybe a meeting with just, just the departments.
Sure.
Something like that would be.
Yeah, and then come back with ideas and, and let us know if you have thoughts on ...
Think of a list.
Mm-hmm.
A list, or ideas that you have, or, you know, let's start, start putting your thinking caps on, because I do think that there are efficiencies and, you know, ways to, ways to go forward that might work better than what we're doing.
We've consolidated a little bit in the same way.
And I think you've all actually told me that, and just started doing it now.
Well, there's always a better way.
Yeah.
All right.
But we want to help. Everybody work together, that's the best thing.
But you got to talk.
But you got to talk.
Yes, you do.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
We got to help the new guy, and we got to help, you know, everybody else. We got to make it work, well, that's all.
Okay.
And I do, I do also want to make clear that this, this wasn't, this isn't just David's problem.
No, no, no.
He had the exact same problem. He just, you know...
Different place.
Got, got exhausted with fighting the problem, so, yeah, it's not a new problem. It's not David's problem.
Yeah.
That was appropriate.
That was a, okay, move on.
Silence.
All right. Well, thanks, everybody, for coming, and should you decide to meet?
Bring it back to all three of us.
Yeah, please, bring it back to us. Thank you.
We'll just come back, and meet with us.
Yeah. See, we have a few minutes before 7:30.
I think I'll go ahead and shut them off.
Hi, Mr. Pennegast.
All right. Do, do we want to go back to number two? Elimination of Selectman Liaison Assignments.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Did you appoint Paul Porter of Earthworks? Did we do that?
Not yet.
We're going to, yeah, he's number five.
All right.
Yeah.
If he needs, if it's allowed, you know, I would be an alternative if he has an issue, you know?
All right.
I would step in for him.
Do you want us to appoint you as an alternate?
Yeah, if you want. If it's, if it's available, I would do that. If he's off, you know, I can work with anybody.
All right. That's a good idea.
That's okay.
Sure.
That'd be awesome.
Thanks, Mr. Wheeler.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
You, too. All right. You had drafted something, Peg, or, did you?
Sure. Yes.
Okay.
No, yes, I did.
I thought you said you were going to, that's what I'm asking.
No, I did. I sent a letter through, or a draft letter, of what to go out to the other departments, since they were the ones who brought it to us, instead of the liaison role wasn't working.
Okay.
What I went through, and again, it's just a, I said I'd come up with a template for reports, and Lisa, I know that you had concerns about everybody coming for report night for that, for all the departments, so I made a list.
Okay.
It's not a list. I only made one.
My main concern with, with the thing that you had put is, I really don't feel that you can put another commitment onto our volunteers without getting their input, and I got input from a few about doing reports and coming regularly to meetings, and got told that they'd think seriously about quitting. So, I think that employees requested this. Volunteers did not request to do an extra report. They already write minutes.
Well, that's why I put that list together, so if you look at the people that required, and I'm sorry, I only brought one copy, that if it's fire, police, EMS, highway, I forget who else is on the top, it's small. It's a small list of those people that you'd require, or those departments that you'd require to come and talk to us. And then all the other ones are, if you want to put something together, great, you know, I know that there's probably not a lot going on. If there's something major coming on, then you could request a report, but again, if the pushback is, "You guys aren't working, we need to start moving to this," then we need to come up with something. And so that was a straw man to put together, to be like, "Here's something, start picking at it for that." So I, I am not married to the letter that I came up with. I'm absolutely open for change on that. Same way with the report template, same way with the list that's in your hand about who you'd need to come, who you might want to get reports from, but then this way, that eliminates the liaison position, that when we go to these meetings, we go as a participant, we're not an active member, we don't make decisions, we're just...
We're an audience member, actually.
We're another beer. Correct.
Yes, but as citizens of the town, we do have the right to go and speak and ...
Oh, absolutely.
State our opinion at any meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah. An audience member does, too.
Yep, absolutely. So that was, that's first pass that you have.
I guess, for me, I would just focus your letter at the employees who requested this, and leave the committees out of this. The committees already know that they come to us when they need to come to us. Personally, I think they had, like, having a point beating, point person, but, you know, I'm tired of fighting about it, so whatever you want to do, just, I would leave the, leave the volunteers out of this case entirely.
Then I'll come back at the next meeting with version two, or I'll send it to you guys ahead of time, a version two of the letter, and can lock it up a little bit, and then we can decide on it, you know, based on your input. I mean, do you want, I mean, Chris, that's the, and again, that was first pass at the list of, you know, who? I mean, you've got building, police, higher, higher, highway, and fire, and then, you know, I know that that person was also, you know, signed the letter, but that department is here more often than not, so I don't know. I just put it as, as needed. I think that's why, yeah.
I think this is going back, basically, to what we had before, which, what it was Instead of liaisons, it'll just be a report, which hopefully will get more information than the way we were doing things before.
All right, so I'll come back. Before our next meeting, I will get out version number two of the letter, and see what we can tackle it with, and maybe next week can make it final.
I don't think that we've never had liaisons up until, what, two years ago or something? A year?
Well, we had liaisons for the ...
Committees and boards.
The committees was something I suggested to broaden things out, because, you know, committees were not getting the attention they needed when I came on. And I think that it's important, as a board, that we don't always demand that they come to us, that we go to them, because these are volunteer positions. So that was the reason for that.
And that doesn't preclude us from, you know, attending the meetings, and...
And I think it's really, really important to respect volunteers' time.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay. All right. Version two coming at you. I'll do it during the snowstorm. If the power stays on.
Oh, you don't need the power, do you?
My generator, yeah. Could get looked at.
Okay. We have an approval. Whoops.
Sorry.
Sorry. Of, wait a minute. A special event application for approval. This is Millennium 5K Jake Sake. It will be on Sunday, May 19th, and it, has it been approved by all departments that needed to approve of it? Okay.
Motion to approve.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have an appointment for Paul McKelk as Board of Health rep to the Earthworks Advisory. Bob Wheeler volunteered to be his alternate.
Motion to approve.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Paul.
And Bob.
And Bob.
2019 licenses and whether to re-fee for a common vic's license for the new owner of the general store. I have a question for you, Mary. So, when you, are you, do you have to redo this at all? It's just changing the name on the books from one owner to another?
Yeah, like a liquor license requires a name change, the owner's name.
Okay.
Where the, where the manager of record is on the face of the license, but not for a common vic.
Okay.
And you could, you could do it, but the only thing I'm really changing is just my contact internally. It doesn't really change anything that's hanging in their store.
Okay. So, that's, it's not that big of an issue as, as I thought it might have been?
No, not like a liquor license.
Right.
Where we actually have to go to the ABCC and then take state approval for the change of a manager.
Right.
It's discretionary here if you want to re-fee somebody for buying a business.
And we're just re-upping their license now, right? Did we just do that?
They already, they already did do it. So they, they, the old owners, you renewed it late in December, and so they got the benefit of two weeks' worth of 2019 license with that $75 fee that they paid, the old owners.
Okay.
Well, outgoing owners.
So...
I guess it'd be precedent-setting, because I, I just don't know, I've not had ownership change in the middle of the year on a business before.
Right.
So I don't know. Otherwise, I would have just done one thing.
And you don't know whether other towns do that, charge a fee?
I don't. I can ask other towns, but it's, it worked for 75 bucks, but then again, maybe it's more...
Yeah, I think that's a lot of, a lot of time to be putting up on money.
I don't have any...
I don't have any objections.
I don't have any objection, either.
To, to which? To just, what are you not objecting to? Just doing it, or are we charging them? No fee?
No fee?
No fee? Okay. I'm with you.
Fee-free.
Okay, so we're in agreement.
Motion to not recharge a common vic that was done two weeks ago.
Seconded on the free fee.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All righty. Okay, it's 7:30. Okay, it's 7:30. We have an appointment with Curtis. Come on up.
Take a chair, any chair.
Oh, I gotta sit?
Sure.
Well, you can stand.
Oh, good. I'd rather stand.
You'd rather stand? Okay.
Curtis Kyle Brandtav slash Richards Drive.
Mm-hmm.
So, excuse my voice, I'm...
Uh-oh.
Yeah. No, thank you. Want to talk to the board, because my understanding is that Highway Department can't do anything until you say he can. Two years ago, you started doing drain work on Barnes Ave, Barnes Hill. Called the then superintendent, said, "Hey, water's a big problem. What are you gonna do?" Got nothing. So, they did halfway up the hill. The next year, they came, they started the rest of the top part. Came home one day, had come onto the property, filled in a drop inlet that was existing, cut the asphalt apron that I had installed to keep water in the road. And installed a drain in the center of the entrance to Richards Drive, the Richards, the road. I called him up, I said, you know, "What's this doing here?" You know? Makes no sense, it's... You cut my apron, he came back, he did put the apron back, but he put it to the curb, so that made no sense. And then, water was in heavy rain, it overwhelms the drain, because I don't think the one at the top of the hill works, because there's still a tremendous amount of water comes down the road. I sent pictures of the damage to the road. He did come with a load of material and graded it up the first time. The second time, he brought me some material and I did it, but it continues. And it's made the entrance unusable. We have cones there, because your only option is to swing wide into oncoming traffic to get around the obstacles that were installed at the road entrance. I've driven around town, I've never seen it, doesn't seem to fit any engineering...
From Barnes?
From Barnes.
Yeah.
You know, 15, 18 years ago, when I moved here, you know, I was told, "Yeah, you know, we're not gonna do anything." So, I installed that apron. And it worked fine, but then they paved the road, they ground it and then paved it, so that came up three, four inches. So, now, when it rains, it comes in. He did a nice job at Brandt, and he dug up and re-graded and made it acceptable. But, he didn't install a drain there. So, currently, if, I don't know if you ever took the time to drive by and take a look at it?
I have.
There's a unusable entrance. There's a, your choices are to drive up and over the curb, or drive into the manhole. Again, there's manholes all up and down the road, they didn't put any in front of anybody else's driveway or road, but he chose to there.
Yeah, I can't speak for Keith. Keith Klemmer. Yeah, you know.
Well, I can't speak for him either, but I, you know, I'm...
His decision to do that?
I'm in construction. You know, the new highway guy came up and threw some die-down in the light rain and said it's not coming in, but if you go up there even now, you can see the debris that flows out of the manhole from, it's still there. You can see, you know, it doesn't, you don't gotta be an engineer to see that the water's running down Richards Drive. So, there's still damage to the road. I mean, you can go to the very end of Richards Drive and see all the material that gets washed down there. And of course, that leads to the other issue, which is, Richards Drive is a, it's a, it's a, it's a road that the town approved, it's a subdivision.
Is it a private drive?
Well...
I'm just asking, is it a private way or...
It's only a private way, because the original developer, which was Larry Brandt's father, developed it, I believe, in around the late 50s or 60s, early 60s. And it was approved subdivision, it had two cul-de-sacs, the town took a bond. He never did anything, he never built any more homes. The property gets sold to another person, who the town then came and approved another 12-lot subdivision. And that same owner still owned Richards Drive. And the town didn't feel they need to use any leverage or anything to have Richards Drive improved, because the owners, the current owner at the beginning is here, and the current owner at the end is here. So, the original owners and subsequent owners kind of stuck with this. And then, I believe somewhere around the 80s, the town, rather than improve the road with the bond that they had, said, "Let's put it in general funds, spend it with our slush fund," and, you know, it did go to town meeting, but I mean, I've been to town meeting, if, you know, they do whatever you suggest. So, if you say, "We approve taking this money," we, so it did go into general funds. But, it leaves me in a precarious position, because now I bought it from the people that had the 12-lot subdivision, didn't finish that road. So, I ended up purchasing the property, I developed Brandt Ave, at which time, the board still didn't see, and you also changed the zoning, so the frontage wasn't enough. So, at that time, you negotiated with me, if I want the variance to finish up the subdivision, that you would approve second subdivision, same property. You took open space, but you didn't say, "Improve Richards Drive." So, now, here I am, the subdivision's done, I live there, they live there, and there's this town road that's in limbo. And it's a road.
So, it is a town road?
It's not a town road.
It's, the town accepted it?
It's not accepted, but it's a town road. It has to be a town road, because his only legal frontage is on Richards Drive, and his legal frontage is on Richards Drive. So, you can't call it not a road. It's on your town maps, it's Richards Drive, for the purpose, because, so, you know, you've kind of put us all in this bad situation. And I know that one time, a young boy had fallen into that drop inlet, because the top had gotten moved over the winter. And the mother called, and you said, "Oh, that's Curtis's problem." And now, the town is also a landowner on that road, because you took open space from me. And the frontage for that is on Richards Drive. So, I think we need to look at what can be done with Richards Drive, because something better than taking the money and saying, "They're not paying attention," or "They won't know," or, you know...
I don't think this is relevant, because, first of all, we were not the board at that time, I know nothing about this industry.
No, but you're still, you're representing the town at this time.
But, it's not, this is not relevant. We need, we need to know what the situation is now, the, this, yeah.
Okay.
So, Dave, can you give us any kind of input as far as...
So, then we'll go back to the subject at hand, which is, we need to get rid of the obstacles that were installed that are continuing to wash out Richards Drive when there's heavy rains.
I think it's gonna be a little bit more than that. Dave, would you like to...
Some of the statements he makes are correct. There was a drop inlet, which was located outside of the town layout. Keith removed that drop inlet, put the basin in the town layout, so it's within the roadway, okay? The driveway, because Richards Drive is not a road, it's a driveway, has a 35-foot curb cut, which is unheard of for driveways. So, the obstacle that Mr. Cowell is claiming is really not in the center of the road, of his driveway, I'm sorry, but it is, in fact, within his curb cut. So, now, I've been up there four times in periods of all kinds of different rainfall, and this was the heaviest event, which was on October 11th. And as you can see, there's a substantial amount of water coming down the road, and it is all going into the basin, there is no water going down the roadway. Now...
This is Richard?
Yes, that's standing in Barnes Hill, looking down Richards Drive.
Which is a road. If it's only a driveway, then those people don't have legal homes.
So, there's a substantial amount of leaves in that basin right there also, because it isn't a fall, leaves come down the gutter and go in the basin. If leaves are clogging up the basin, causing water to go down Richards Drive, I fail to see how the town has any liability on that.
So, it's my responsibility to clean out the, if the outlet, if it wasn't in front of the road, it would wash somewhere else.
Well, it sounds like we need to determine, is this an accepted road, and is it our responsibility or not?
Another photo that, it was raining substantially that day, that's a different day, we put some dye to show that the water is continually running by the berm, it's not going down Richards Drive.
That wasn't a considerable rainstorm.
So, this event here, 10 minutes after this photo was taken, I was contacted by the police department to go down to Gates Pond Road, because the road was flooded. And if you want to look up the record, it'll be recorded. So, this was substantial rain.
Yep.
Cars were on 62, pulled off the side of the road.
And, you know, when I have been up there, I have not seen how water can run down Richards Road, coming from the town.
Because in a heavy rain, it built, it comes with such force, because like I said, I don't believe the one at the top is collecting water. Because the amount of water, I sent the number of pictures to you, he brought his pictures, but I sent multiple pictures of the back of the asphalt washed out. And I know his comment in the email that he sent me, said something about, you know, it's runoff, but in 10 feet, you know, I'm not a hydraulic specialist, engineer, but in the 10 feet of that apron, to wash out the gravel on the backside, would have to be quite a bit of water.
But, it's not coming from the town.
Well, that, that's what he's saying.
No, I, I'm saying that from being there.
I have seen it.
I've lived there for 30-something years, and that water's coming down that road, Barnes Road, and coming over that, and coming right down Richards Drive, and washing that away. 35 years it's been going on. We told Dennis before, when Dennis was in charge, he wouldn't go on the property, because he said it was private property.
It's not.
He's been on the property, he saw it, and he witnessed it.
My apron.
And he brought us material to fill in the ruts from the water.
So, is this a problem that was created by putting this basin in, or is it a problem that's been going on for 35 years? I'm a little confused here.
It's been going on for a long time, but that drain now, it's just coming right up and over.
Did you see this photo, sir? Let me show you this.
You will not find a day that any rain was coming in any part of the area. Okay, well, first of all, what I want to know is, anywhere in town or anywhere you've seen, I don't know, are you an engineer? I'm just asking.
He's our highway superintendent.
Then, where else in this town or this state do they put a manhole in front of a driveway? Where?
It's not a manhole, it's a catch basin.
A catch basin, whatever you want to call it. And it's this deep, and my son come down the road, made the corner, hit it, and broke his strut right there, from something you guys put in, not you, but they put in, at the very beginning of our driveway.
So, then what's the proposal? To move this back, to move this in, to...
Well, I think we first need to find out what is our responsibility. That's my, that's my two cents.
And what happened to the bond for the road, to fix the road?
To the what?
To the bond that was taken on that road, to fix it.
This is the first time hearing of a bond.
So, just to clarify, a bond, a bond is not posted to, a bond is posted to correct a problem that a contractor creates. So, if the, if the entryway for this road was destroyed, and Barnes Hill Road was no longer usable, that's where the bond would come in. The bond is a fraction of the, of the construction cost. I'm gonna guess the bond for that was probably $5,000 or less.
Right back in the 60s. Right, it'd be a lot different today.
Right, so it would only be able to be spent on that interest.
Correct?
So, when a contractor defaults...
It would have been nothing to do with fixing Richards, it would have been fixing the road that they potentially broke.
It's not to build a road should the contractor default. It's not, that's not the intention of a bond.
Okay. So, it looks like we're gonna have to do some looking into this, and take it under advisement.
Well, back when Dennis was here, and the water was coming in, and he said, "I'm not doing nothing." I said, "Well, can I keep the water in the road?" So, I put that asphalt apron that exists there. I did that. And for quite a while, it worked pretty good, you know, except in the worst of rainstorms. It worked really well. But then, the town came in and installed that. And if you actually go up there and look at it, and you see where he put back the apron, because he had cut mine out, so he's been on private property, and I also sent you pictures where the heavy equipment drove into Richards Drive and broke up the asphalt. So, you've been on private property, you've cut my property back, you took out the drop inlet, which he just said was well off of the town land, and installed, made the entrance unusable. So, and that is...
I believe you're asking for help, which the previous highway superintendent was trying to give you, and...
No, no, the previous highway, he never spoke with me.
Keith?
Yes.
So, is there...
The only time I spoke to him is after he had come and filled in the inlet, and cut the property, and put that new in, new drain in.
So, since none of us were here when this started, Mary, you probably weren't here either, I can imagine, is there any way that we can ask Mr. Klemmer and Mr. Bartlett to come to a meeting, to see if they have any back information on this? I mean, it's kind of hard to determine what to do going forward, when we don't really know what was done going backwards.
I think there's a couple of other things we also...
Need to look at as well.
Identify whether, you know, like I said, our responsibility, the static, the state of which the road is, whether it's a driveway, a road, an accepted road.
No, I mean, the...
That's what we're gonna have to do.
The answer is, every time I've spoken to the board, whether it's this particular board, or boards in the past, you don't want to touch it with a 10-foot pole, because you didn't do, you didn't protect your citizens at any step of the way.
That's an unfair statement to make to this board, since the three of us were here, and I think that you need...
Okay, you guys didn't, but the board did.
Please don't interrupt me. You need to give us the opportunity to do our due diligence, to find out what happened here, and then we can come back to you, because none of us are gonna make a decision on, "Dave, go fix the hole," until we know what needs to be done. So, if you allow us that opportunity, then we can have you come back when we have a little bit more information.
Sure.
Thank you, Peg. Thank you, Peg. Thanks, Curtis.
But, there are no guarantees here as to what's gonna happen. We will look, and we will...
If you can, if you can come up with a picture of that scenario, anywhere, anywhere, they didn't put one at the new town barn.
I'm sure of.
Hey, I'm sure, you know, sir...
All right, okay. So, why don't we, why don't we stop?
We can't do anything else tonight.
Right, why don't we stop? And then, we'll figure out, we'll divvy what needs to be done between the three of us, and then we'll give you a holler back, and we'll keep you updated. Mary, can you keep, keep Mr. Cowell updated as to our progress?
We'll keep in touch as well.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, obviously, it's winter, we can't do anything.
Would you like to be in touch as well?
I can get it from him.
That's good.
Same?
And just, just to, for the, so, Richards Drive, my concern is, the liability's on me, and maybe the bond was only 5,000, or probably only 1,000. You know, the three residents of that property, four, because the town is now a resident, they own property. You own property on that. So, the liability's on me, which it shouldn't be.
We'll do our best.
It should be, you know, at the very least, you know, like, he plows it, because he lives at the end, but he may get tired of plowing it. And, you know, maybe somebody else buys his property, and they pay. There's no, there should have been at least an agreement amongst the people.
We will look into it.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Dennis?
Oh, sir?
Mm-hmm. What's that? Can you talk to her?
Yeah, do you want the pitcher? David, do you want your pitcher back? Hey, I met your daughter.
Thank you.
We met your daughter the other day.
We'll be contacting you.
Because I had my hat on.
Yeah. I bet you are.
We had the little guy at the hospital last night, like 3:00 in the morning, he's got...
He's got the flu and couldn't breathe, so.
Have a seat.
Oh, yeah, come on, grab a seat. I'll let you guys introduce yourself. From Marsh McLennan.
I'm Danielle Chaplik from Marsh and McLennan.
And I'm Philip Bonacorso from Marsh and McLennan Agency.
Peg, nice to meet you. Nice to meet you, sir.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Oh, sorry, nice to meet you.
We're doing this in our...
Yes.
Nice to meet you, Lisa.
Nice to meet you, Lisa.
They're one of the consultants that I contacted to talk about analyzing what we currently have for benefits. The issue of retiree benefits has come up, hiring more professional people, et cetera. We don't have retiree benefits right now. We talked about trying to avoid the Cadillac tax and the fact that we've gone from a small group to a mini group. It's been cut in halves as of May of next year. So they're here to just answer any questions and go over how fees might work and what they're able to do.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. There you go. And we have a few extra copies if you need some for the record.
Should I just take them, Mary?
Sure. So maybe, would it make sense if maybe we started with some introductions of myself and Phil and what we're focused on? And then also just generally what our company offers from a consulting standpoint? And then maybe get into what we've done with our work in the communities? And then give you a high-level overview of the proposal we've presented? And then answer any questions?
Absolutely.
So as I mentioned, my name is Danielle Chaplik and I was formerly with the Massachusetts Group Insurance Commission for the majority of my career before I started at Marsh and McLennan in the consulting role. My primary responsibility under the GIC from 2007 until '15 was to lead the Municipal Partnership Acts under the Deval Patrick Administration. So I worked with communities that were both evaluating the GIC local option and those that actually transitioned in, which was approximately 63 under my tenure during those seven years. And then when I joined Marsh, I essentially lead the public sector business segment where we're working with cities, towns, and school districts on different consulting strategies on their health insurance benefits.
Thanks. So again, Philip Bonacorso, Managing Director at the firm. Been there for a little over eight and a half years. Prior to that, I spent 10 years at another consulting firm in Boston and Philadelphia. My role at the organization is part of the senior leadership team, but also to support the verticals in which we kind of, which we're in. So one of them is healthcare and the other is the municipality vertical. So Danielle and I work together on the municipality vertical. And really, my role there is to help support from a local as well as a national level anything that the organization may need and then our consulting teams may need.
So, you know, in the, getting into a little bit more of a granular perspective of what we've been doing with the communities. So since I started, I would say that we've been on what I would call a listening tour over the past 24 months, where we have sat within the upwards of 50 communities with town managers and mayors throughout this time, really assessing granulally about how we can bring something different to the market in terms of consulting. And so along the way, we've picked up, I think, about seven communities at this point, probably in the last 15 months, in which we're working with them. Some of them are some major cities such as the city of Medford and town of Middleborough and so forth. And we're really focused on, I think most of them have been in a joint purchasing arrangement such as what the town is in currently as it's with Maya right now.
Yeah.
And then also helping evaluate their ancillary benefits as well. And so, you know, in doing so, what we really want to bring differently to the market, as Phil said, you know, in his work in the healthcare sector, we really want to bring some new ideas, whether that be partnering with local hospitals or local healthcare systems and/or, you know, really focusing on data analytics and other ways where we can really help the cost management in the long term for these communities. And I'd say, you know, one of the major themes that we've heard in the past year and a half has really been a focus on employee education. So in the communities that we've worked with, that's another aspect that we put a lot into in really educating employees and retirees on their benefits and, you know, how to choose the right ones that fit best for their circumstances. So those are some of the key things I'd say that we've been focused on. So when Dennis pursued a conversation with us, you know, our very peripheral understanding is that the town has been with Maya for quite a while and that there could be some opportunity to both look at the market and see what other options might be available as well as perhaps, you know, working with Maya as a partner in terms of looking at maybe some other plan designs and different ideas that could work even with that existing partnership. As my understanding is, you're quite small, right? Under 50 lives, is that right?
Yeah.
You know, so that, I think in our conversations, we've talked a lot about how that presents, you know, sort of a predicament in which that if you go directly to a carrier, you know, most likely because you're not going to have that experience data and such from Maya, that you're going to be quoted on their, what they call their general manual. So you may not, you know, necessarily have the best positioning from direct carriers. But we definitely think that, you know, it's important to look at it, you know, nonetheless, and, you know, maybe consider other purchasers such as the GIC and look at all of that together, you know, as part of that medical analysis and along with your ancillaries and then introducing, you know, potentially a retiree option.
So Danielle, in 20 words or less, what is the main difference between a consultant and a broker?
Well, a consultant and...
And I'll give you more than 20 words.
Okay. And it's a fair point because it was something I was going to address when Dennis introduced us. So a consultant is being paid a flat fee. So we're not getting any commission or any money directly from a carrier. Most of, all of our municipal engagements right now have been on a consulting basis. So we're paid one fixed fee and we are completely objective and neutral to all market options and, you know, driven by that in terms of payment. I don't know if Phil, you want to...
Yeah, the same is true as a, if you want to consider a broker. We are kind of pay-agnostic. We get paid through a consulting arrangement, a fee arrangement, or a, you know, a commission that's baked into the fee, which if we, that doesn't drive our decision because it's the same commission baked in no matter what. So we're agnostic to that, how we get paid. So I think traditionally, the way that it was described, the broker was getting paid a commission and the consultant was getting paid, you know, a fee basis. But when I was at, you know, Towers Perrin, we connected commissions and fees. So it didn't really, really change any of that. I think just the marketplace defined it that way, so.
I talked to a few brokers and they're not apt to get involved with the GIC or Maya because there is no commission involved. There's no long-term connection.
A broker.
Yeah. So, and there's also the question of trust. Are they going to lowball the first year to make things look good? It's happened. And then we lived those days back when we had non-Maya. So, you know, that's another thing that I've observed talking to everybody.
And it is very important for a group of your size to be considering the purchasers probably primarily. Because it probably will end up being, you know, the best arrangement for you. So that's why, you know, in our conversations previously, it didn't make sense necessarily to go the broker route from our, from our perspective at this point. So in the, in the proposal we put together, essentially in Section 1, Pages 2 and 3, we talk about, which we touched on briefly here, sort of the importance of what the evaluation would yield for the town. And so we would look at the medical, we would look at the ancillaries. I assume that's still on the table, Chris, you missed the ancillaries as well.
Yes.
And then our understanding is that you would like to evaluate some retiree options as well, which we can do. And not, I don't know how much we can get into that today because we have some questions for you on, you know, sort of where the employees fall, unionized, non-unionized, because I know you're not part of the school anymore. Is that correct?
We won't be as of May of next year.
Right, right. So we do have an attorney on staff who can help us, you know, evaluate that from a statutory, from Chapter 32B standpoint and how to introduce a retiree benefit. And we would look at, you know, what that implication would be on the Maya current rates.
I think part of our plan, at least unofficially, is to try to save enough money by redesigning the medical plan to help offset the cost of the future, yeah.
Retiree health benefits.
If it's supported.
And I'm confident that, you know, Maya would continue to be a good partner in that as well. And I think they should definitely be considered a, you know, a viable option going forward as well.
Because they pretty much have plans that, and Chris has met, that match the benchmark plans at the GIC.
Correct.
Which is part of my goal or should be to avoid the Cadillac tax, if you think that's going to happen.
And, you know, the benchmark plan, so just as a point of reference, so all the Massachusetts health plans have a version of a GIC benchmark plan. So they have their own version. So Maya, Blue Cross, Direct, they all have their own iteration of that. And, you know, and we can take that and, you know, make immandations to it. It doesn't have to be exactly what they present, but we can certainly work with that across any of, any of the plans. And when is, when are you, what is your effective date?
July 1st.
Okay.
Yeah. Open a room in April.
So you're July 1st. So you would have to, so you have to tell Maya in February?
Right, because they probably won't even have the rates ready till that time because they're going to vote on it at the get-together next week in Boston. And then they'll have to sit down and have the actuaries work on our rate based on, I think through October, November last year to figure out what the rate is.
And, you know, maybe, you know, I think, I think we can definitely work with the timing of this. And if, you know, if something else were to, like, let's say, for example, let's say the GIC is a financially better option. You know, we've missed the July 1 deadline because the notification was December 1. But they do have another one that would be July 1 for January 1. So we could also explore, you know, a six-month extension with Maya if we wanted to still consider the GIC for this year.
Okay.
So just in the, you know, in the, in the rest of this, Pages 2 and 3 really outline what the scope of the analysis is, what we would need to get started. And then Section 2, which is the example of the fee schedule. So this is really based on our conversations with Dennis in terms of really wanting a longer-term partnership with a consultant. And that's what, what our understanding is, that, you know, we really want to have, be in a position to manage the costs in the longer term. So typically for an evaluation of the medical and ancillaries, a typical assessment for a community would be $25,000 in year one. Given the town's size, we wanted to be reasonable about what that looks like. So we presented this as split up over three years. So then we could work with you on a more ongoing basis and it would essentially be, you know, the 8,000-ish a year to look at this. And if we needed to, we would do the evaluation now and if we needed to look at it again in 24 months, we can certainly do that and sort of be on retainer, if you will, to help, you know, help with any other issues that might come up in management. Now, I mean, we can certainly talk about a one-year arrangement, but that, that seemed to make most sense given the goals and priorities that Dennis talked to us about. So I didn't know if you had any feedback for that. And we, we are willing to, because I understand that you're probably budgeting now for July 1. Like this probably is something that's not in your budget.
Right.
So although we can, we're, we're willing to do the work now to meet that July 1 deadline, we can kind of, we can wait until July 1 to bill out that first 8,000 if that helps.
It's common practice too.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not the exception.
Okay.
One of the things I'd want to get a rough idea on consulting cost is how much we think we'd save by doing it, you know, whereas... Which is kind of a hard thing to do because you don't know if the brokers are going to lowball and then go up 14, 16% the following year or... So it's something to think about. But that reduces it to a cost of $8,000, which I don't think is unreasonable.
No, and the town's going to grow too. You know, we're not, we're not going to stay at under 50.
And we need to put this retiree stuff to bed once and for all.
Right.
We've talked about it for, well, 18 years now.
It's a problem when we go to hire, particularly if we want an experienced town administrator. They're going to come in here and want retirement.
Right.
And I think there's only seven of, do you know the figure? There's seven or eight left that don't have it.
Six.
Six towns that...
Oh, it's shrinking.
Six towns in Massachusetts that don't have retiree?
They're going to be very unhappy when they see that we do not have retirement benefits.
It's a good thing the camera's on because, well, I'd be saying something right about now. Seriously?
It's not 50/50 or, you know, something you can live with. It's down.
Yeah.
Never really want to be in. Okay. Wow, didn't know that. Okay.
And we do have an attorney on staff who would be available to you that can help with the Cadillac tax questions and so forth.
Yeah, because that's coming up.
Right.
2022.
Yeah, until they kick that can down.
Till they kick it down the road, yeah.
So what's your feeling on that?
I personally don't think it's going to happen for a number of reasons. I think there's, there's too many stakeholders on both sides that don't want it. That's why they each, when one of them kicks it down the can, the other one doesn't really say anything about it. So I think it's...
You kicked the can. No, you kicked the can.
That's right. That's right. In 2030, we'll be talking about it again.
But we still have to have it on our agenda.
Yeah, it's always something to be mindful of, right, obviously. But it's, I, yeah, I think the likelihood gets less and less every time you...
You can have a completely different ballgame by 2022.
Well, yeah.
That's true.
Yeah.
Do we have any flexible spending now? FSAs, DCAs?
One of the reasons is we were recommended by some to do it, some not to do it because accounts towards the Cadillac tax. You have to add it in, whatever the value was, the way I understand it.
There is a function of that in there, yeah.
Yeah. There's two or three different ways of doing it too, different plans.
I think we need to sort of worry about that when it becomes an issue, but that's...
No, I mean, I like it because, you know, you flip the page to six and it's like, they can do this, they can do this, they can do this, they can do this. So it's almost as if you have everything that you are there and without calling around for an answer, you can just be like, hey, Phil, what's up? Got a question for you. Can you help me?
They can provide opinions. Some people are excited about tele-doctoring or whatever the word is. And some people think it's just a fad. Others think it's great. But I don't know whether it's going to save a lot of money or not. It'd be more apt to know.
Oh, you have to look at your millennials. I don't want to go to the doctor. I want to be like, hey, look at this boo-boo, you know?
And that, I think the telehealth too, because you have Blue Cross products through Maya. So Maya uses American Well, which is their telehealth vendor. So your employees already have that as an option now. So that plays into the education piece where we would work with you to try to figure out how to educate your employees better on how to use it. Because that's the way, you know, to drive those particular costs that you're talking about.
On top of medical too, we're talking about dental. And I don't know what the current status is, but we used to have Delta and we went with Blue Cross, Maya because they tied the diseases to the tooth care.
Right.
And it wasn't a theory, it became kind of fact that you take care of your teeth. You're helping with heart, diabetes, pregnancy, there's four or five of them. And at the time, they couldn't, because of HIPAA, deal with other vendors like have Delta talk to Maya for calling people to say, calling people to say, hey, I see you have a bad heart. Did you brush your teeth today? I went through that for a couple of months. But, you know, if that's changed, that might be something that you could look at, because people really like Delta Dental.
And so right now, I'm sorry if I'm misunderstanding, right now you have Blue Cross's dental or you do have Delta?
Blue Cross.
Okay.
Yeah, we gave Delta up because of that. They couldn't do the medical part that
Yes. And so now that, you're absolutely right, that before there was less cross sharing of that data. And now there's definitely more arrangements in the market now. So
So you'd be aware of those.
Yes, we can definitely evaluate that as part of looking at the dental.
Okay, good. I like the app, too.
The what?
The app. Everything's on your phone. Well, I mean, you know, to Lisa's point, who are you going to attract? A bunch of millennials who will just be like, boop, 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 on their phone? Or someone who is putting manual claims in and didn't mean you, you know, just saying that, that you need to
Thanks, Peg.
You're welcome. You know, but you have to look at all the potential people that may come to work for Berlin and how can we address their needs.
Yes, that's what I was saying, was potential people.
And one of the final things that they could get involved in would be side benefits we either pay for or just the employee pays for. You know, Aflac is something that we tried here and it works. But this would be more along the lines of eye care or pet insurance.
Voluntary benefits?
Don't laugh at pet insurance. I'm telling you.
I've got three of them.
It's a great market. Don't laugh. And it's an evergreen, so you don't need a qualifying life event to have a pet. You can just get in and get out.
And if I understand it right, the only thing you'd kind of reserve the right to be the broker for that sort of thing, or if you had to.
You mean for the voluntarys?
Yes.
It would be ideal.
Typically.
Yeah, it's not your main goal and it's not like the brokers do. But if it's something we don't have now and they come up with it.
We have a, we have a consultant that's pretty much all he does is analyze voluntary benefits. So that, that person could, and it's not, it's, it's done more strategically. So it's not just throwing a bunch of stuff on the wall. It's really seeing what's kind of makes sense. And the traction retention part is, makes sense. And then how it also plays into the other parts of the benefits, so.
So even though we're small, because I'm looking at page nine and you have your lives, you've got 1,200, 200 is like the closest we come to 400, 1,200, 30, 400 rounding up. No concerns about us being
So this, this particular illustration is what we've done with our RX solutions.
Okay.
So we, this would not necessarily pertain to you because you're with Maya and Maya has the, is managing your pharmacy. These are for clients that have been direct with a medical carrier and with a PBM where we could manage their pharmacy.
Okay.
So section 3 is a general capability section, just for your knowledge of sort of what our work has been generally, and then particularly some success stories in the municipal space.
Do we offer short term disability, long term disability, accidental death, any of those?
It depends on who you talk to, what the definition is. But
Okay.
In the private sector, I always call long term disability the one that kicked in after 90 days.
Correct.
And short term starts immediately.
After sick time, yes.
It's a little bit different. But yes. And we also have Aflac and Colonial Life that offer it to the employees, should they choose to do it at their expense. But it's an area that should be looked into.
Oh, God, yeah.
It's kind of like what your total compensation package is to your members and total rewards. And it's like, this is what we offer you as a complete package and how you communicate that to them, right?
Any other questions?
Anymore?
Nope. So we'll leave my card. And if Dennis knows how to get in touch with me, but if you guys have any other questions, please feel free to reach out.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
You all set?
Yes.
It's a pleasure.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Can I take an extra moment to escape one to the account? Thank you.
Oh, it's okay.
What? What did I call her? I said, it's a pleasure to meet you.
Michelle.
It was a long day. Oh, we is not over yet. It's a long day.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks. You get your stuff.
Shush. Look, I was defending the town from the previous meeting. Come on, I give credits. I was ready to protect you.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome. I got your back.
Hold on, grab a seat.
Thank you.
Kick your shoes off.
Come on down. Come on down.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
I'll let you introduce yourself.
My name's Anthony Lively from Lively Insurance. Little background on our company. One of our specialties is municipalities. I've been in the Massachusetts municipal space for nine years. Our company's been in the space for over 20 years. What, probably the closest client that we have is City of Marlboro. We've had them for as long as I've been around, plus a number of years longer than that. I'm pretty comfortable in this room. I used to sit on the other side. Well, not as a selectman, but I used to work for different town boards and stuff like that. So I know how these meetings can, can run late. So I'm not going to go on and on about that. But I did bring some materials for you.
I'm not going to Some copies, too.
Yeah.
Two pads.
Yeah, I'm just gonna
Thank you.
I'll just give you this. I'm not going to go over the presentation. Don't worry. Yep, yep.
I just wanted to say upfront that Anthony is both a consultant and broker.
Oh, sure.
So he, in this case, is representing the consulting side.
Yep.
Not the broker side.
Yep. So, yeah, we have all the appropriate licenses to, to be a Massachusetts advisor or consultant. So we can, do you want me to just kind of go over? I want to have a little background, too. I know Dennis and I talked, but I want to understand kind of what questions maybe can I answer or go over? Or do you want me to just start talking about different things or?
What kind of questions have you answered for him?
Well, basically, the overall attempt to save some money.
Yep.
Compare us to other communities because we're falling behind on how much the co-pays are. We don't have a deductible.
Yep.
That kind of thing. We're kind of concerned about the Cadillac tax, but it kind of tells us that a lot of other communities have better programs. And we, I just found out it's down to six now tonight. We don't provide any of our employees with retirement, retiree benefit plan. So we'd like to see what we could do possibly on one side to offset the cost of setting that up.
Okay.
And we know that there's different ways of doing that. You know, seniority, tenure, whatever, how much you pick up percentage wise. And we'd like some advice on that, I think, just so we can get a handle of what that might cost. That's pretty much a fair
Yeah.
Assessment.
Okay.
Nobody's looked at, nobody's ever actually looked at our insurance, right?
Free.
Well, in this way.
Well, Maya, to be honest, Maya is, has an actuary company called Cabot. I think it's Cabot. So they're, Chris has dealt with them before. They're, they're on top of everything. So they, the one thing that we've had since we get rid of the three vendors and went to Maya is basically a 6 to 8% per year, steady, consistent. And that was one of the things that we'd have to talk about, where's your cutoff for these large cases that are pooled? And right now Maya covers you at 75,000. We've talked about that. You know, that would be something we'd be looking for to keep the rates down. Prior to Maya, we're in the 14 to 16% increase every year and it was just driving us nuts.
At your, at your size, it's difficult to be on your, a standalone entity.
And now we're even smaller.
And, and yes, exactly. I know you communicated that with me. And furthermore, with the Affordable Care Act, the way that smaller municipalities are rated has changed with some of the carriers. So now you're somewhat lumped into small, the small group market, which has actually merged. For a number of years, you were treated as large group even though you were small. So essentially that, that has some, some consequences. You do get some rate pooling from that, but you, you have to, the benefits in that index every year, which provides a challenge for you as a municipality because you have union contracts and things like that. How many bargaining units do you guys have?
Just one now, right?
One now.
Okay.
Well, one, the school leaves in May.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
They've always done their own bargaining anyhow with one selectman here that's involved.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. So that, that actually really streamlines some of the processes. Some of our clients have almost 20 unions. So it gets, it gets pretty complicated. But to, you know, to kind of, there's a lot of things I can go over. But the first thing I would say is, looking at your benefits and having done benchmarks for several communities recently in your space, you guys obviously have a pretty rich benefit. And I think you already know that. There's a couple of different ways to address that. And certainly, if you offer, you know, a deductible plan or all these different things, your rates could decrease. So there's, there's the plan design factor. And then there's also where do you procure your insurance? Right now, you get it through Maya. You do benefit from the pooling through that. There are other options other than that. And, you know, we can certainly, I could talk for a while about that. We're actually involved in establishing a joint purchase group, which I talked to Dennis, Dennis about. You know, that, that's, that's another avenue. There's also the GIC that you can join. I'm actually a GIC member through my wife, who's, works for the state police. So there's the ability for towns to join the GIC. So there's a multiple different ways to, to look at where you procure your insurance and also the plan design. Have you guys accepted the sections to go to the GIC level of benefit? I believe it's 21 through 23.
I don't believe we have.
Okay.
Have to go back and check. But back then, it was the first option when we talked about it, where you had to be careful. You had to set it up right so that if you went in and the GIC didn't work, you could get out and the union couldn't stop you. That was before the second round that
So there's legislation that basically allows you to, to either bring your benefits down to the GIC level outside of collective bargaining or to join the GIC. And there's some complexities to do that and some timelines you have to follow. The first step is to vote in the sections. And then from there, you can exercise those sections. And there's a very specific timeline that you have to follow that, that we've done with communities. You can go through that entire process. Or what we've done with, with communities is we recommend especially to go through and vote in the sections and then present with you guys, it's only one union. And the employees with, with option A, which is go to the GIC level or go to the GIC, or present some plan design options as, as a middle ground with the hope that they would agree and that's amenable to them.
Prior boards have been reluctant to. It's basically forcing the unions to do what you tell them. Bottom line.
And what we recommend is you have the sections in place and the timeline in place to do that. But, but try to present like a middle ground. And if you guys were to go to the GIC level, that would be a rather large shock to your employees from where they are now with the plan design because there's no deductible.
Option three.
Yes.
For what you know.
So what we try to do is, is come up with on the plan design side, a solution that makes a lot of sense. And page seven of this presentation talks a little bit about this process and, and what you do. And this is just a quick slide that I put together, but it's just a visual representation for you to kind of take back and look at. So we've, we've helped communities to do that. We always, we try to be on the side of a middle ground. And what I can say is if you do exercise all the way to the GIC level, or you go into the GIC, well, let's say if you change your benefits to the GIC level, and then the benefits change, you have to go back through that process again. It doesn't automatically ratchet down. If you join the GIC, you, you have to elect in from between three and six years. It is a savings, but it's also a plan design change. So fiscally, that's a little concerning that you're locked in for that period of time. And I think most recently last year, they, they really tried to make some changes with carriers that were a little scary to people, me being one of them, because I'm a GIC member. But again, you know, you're part of the entire state pool plus some other municipalities. So that's a couple, you know, a little bit on the, on the active side. So the retiree side, I know you guys are one of the few communities left. We do have communities that we know of that do not have retiree plans. I've heard that you can avoid it, but my understanding is that you're supposed to offer it. And that was what we got. We have a municipal lawyer on retainer from Mary O'Connell that we use regularly. And that was kind of his, his, his opinion is that it's supposed to be offered.
I think it's offered, but it's paid by the
Employee.
The retiree.
Yes, the retiree.
Yep.
Yeah, 100%.
Yeah.
So you get, you, you have it, it's sponsored through the town?
Right. I think Governor Weld, my old, going back
No.
Different governors.
At least you didn't say to caucus.
Tried to force it, but it got canned. So we didn't have to, I don't know if you remember that.
I shouldn't shake my head, should I?
Yeah.
So you do, you do have, you currently have it, but you want to look at?
Well, we let them stay on at 100% of the cost.
Okay, so you offer, well, it's not quite COBRA, but essentially the direct
It's extended COBRA, we call it.
Yep, yep. Okay, okay.
I'm not sure how much of a benefit that is.
Most people go to China's it and then they find out there's a lot of cheaper plans. And the other thing that's changed is the government is picking up half of, if I have it right, half of the, or most of the drugs now. So what used to be an eight or a $900 a month retiree plan is now cut in half to about 400. So if we were to pick up 50% at 65, it would be a $200 roughly a month cost per retiree instead of the crazy amounts that it used to be. Especially when people retire at 55, you eat 50% of 2,200 a month, right?
Yeah, so you
So it gets expensive.
And it can get a little bit complex, too, because we would have to really figure out where you cut it. And, and how do you offer that initial open enrollment? One of the things that's interesting is, is that you have the retirees that are paying directly, but they're on essentially the active plan, it sounds like.
Yep.
Where they, they could potentially be eligible for Medicare and under section 18, they, they would have to enroll in that.
Which they do when, when they hit that age. They have to.
Yep.
We have teachers that have never worked privately and have to stay on just because they don't qualify for Medicare.
Yeah, they haven't. They're not Medicare eligible. Okay.
And we have a lot of police officers who retire a little bit early and then still have to have part time jobs because they can't do the health insurance. So I think that, that was one of the things that came up.
Absolutely. And, and at that, you know, for early retirees, they would be on the active plan. You generally set up another plan number for them. And then you could, you could kind of figure out what percentage you, you wanted to, to pay towards that and how that would work. But I would also look at people that are retired now that aren't on it. Like, do you have a special open enrollment period? So there, I think there's a lot, my point is, there's a lot of small parts to that.
No, you can go no retro, right?
That'd be, that'd be just a question. We have a
That'll come up.
We have a, we have a community that's, at one point would let retirees come back on the plan at any point. And they're kind of closing that door. So what they're doing is, is a special open enrollment period for one, one time special open enrollment period. And they're letting their retirees on, but they have to be on the active plan when they retire in order to get on the Medicare plan. So there, there's just some considerations and there is ways to do it. I'm just pointing at a lot of different things. It can, it absolutely can be done. And we're more than happy to, to look at different options for that and look at cost implications as well.
No fee structure for you or?
We generally would, would have to look at like a, we'd do like a flat fee for you. I did put together something non-inclusive of any retiree benefits, I believe via email. But, you know, given an updated scope, I could, I could put together a price. I don't have one available right now. I don't know if that's what you're looking for.
Just get a ballpark and see how we could also do it. Would we start now or wait till July when we have a new budget?
Yeah, we could
Or merge the two.
Yeah, we could certainly do. Work on, we're flexible. I mean, every municipality's needs are a little different.
Yeah.
As much as they're the same, they're all different. And I'd love to work with you guys because I'm local. I'm in Hudson, so it's pretty easy. But, but yeah, I could talk to my team and come up with a, with a budget for you.
And the other question I personally have is where are they with Canadian drugs? Has anyone started doing that? Or are there still barriers?
No, City of Lynn's a client of ours for stop loss and they are, they're utilizing that. They do what's called a prescription drug carvo. That's where it's nice to join a larger group. Maya, I don't believe offers that.
Not yet, no.
And I don't see them going in that direction for a lot of different reasons.
Blue Cross.
They, they, they like the, the current system. Let's put it that way. So there are, there's, there's a lot of different things we can do. One is where do you procure your insurance? Two is, how do we look at plan design modifications? And then the third, I think, would be looking at the retiree piece and how, how would that work? And helping you guys to come up with a plan and, and some different things.
And I mean, and that's all part of the educational material, too, is that for so long, people are used to, oh, I don't have any co-pays, so it's really easy peasy. Well, now what do you mean? I have a $40 co-pay. Yes, you may have a $40 co-pay. However, here's 15 additional benefits that you
Yep.
I didn't know that. So it's really educating the folks on this side of the table as your plan was this. It's going to cost you a little bit more, but now you have this.
Absolutely.
And I don't know if you remember the, when we got sued by the union, we don't have the right to dictate benefits in in the union contracts, to my knowledge. I don't know what the last police one looks like, but we've avoided that.
Okay.
But we changed from Delta Dental to Blue Cross. to Blue Cross and the prosthetics or whatever you call it, the extra stuff changed. And the teachers' union took us through a horrible going to court, going to Boston. It was, and so I kept trying to tell them that what they're saving in their paycheck added up to more than what that additional cost would be because they had to pay extra for their dentures or whatever it was.
Yep.
And when they settled, you know, it was proven that they probably owed us thousands of dollars. They saved more in their paycheck than what they were squawking about that they lost, so, you know.
Well, you don't realize that, you're just looking at the bottom line.
Exactly.
You know, $30 a week is coming out compared to, oh my God, I need new glasses and now I have to pull, you know, pay full fee.
And it depends on who you are.
Correct.
You know, I've got six or seven prescriptions. If we went up.
It adds up.
I'm going to suffer more than the 22-year-old Adonis that never gets sick.
Correct. Agreed.
And they're out there.
They're out there.
Absolutely, it affects everybody differently.
Yep.
One of the things we look at as we change medical benefits and it's unique to municipalities. And I've seen it when we've, we've seen brokers that don't normally and consultants that don't normally work in the space. And I had one happen about a year ago that I, you know, was sitting down with a prospective client. And they didn't look at the entire document for the plan, the entire plan document compared to the new plan. So when we switch carriers, we have, we have to do that. We have to sit down and go through it line by line and look at just how things are, you know, looped together. And is there a limit on visits for physical therapy and occupational, they lumped together? All these little things and we have to make sure all those things match up because you end up in a situation where, yeah, the co-pay's matched up, but this little benefit is no longer bundled or it's limited per visit or all those things. So it's, it's kind of unique. And to the point of education and voluntary benefits and things like that, we do have a really good solution for that. A company that we've used a lot, American Fidelity. They offer voluntary benefits, but they do provide a free flex or HSA plan at no cost to the town. It's pretty popular, one of their niches is municipalities. And they do a really good job. They'll do one-on-one meetings with employees and they'll explain how the flex spending works. And again, as an employer, you can make a contribution to that. So if you did make plan design modifications and you're like, hey, I really want, you know, people to not get walloped by the, you know, the first round of prescription drugs and be prepared. What we've seen is they'll make a small contribution to the FSA or, you know, HSA. There's not a ton of municipalities that just offer HSA plans, but they are, they are there. But I would say that's, that's a good way to do it. The other thing you can do with that is you can add an accident plan or, you know, it's all voluntary. So there's these things in place where, one, people understand what the, what the changes are because we've instructed the enrollers to tell everybody one-on-one, hey, this is going on. You do an active enrollment, you update different things. And then you kind of let them know how this is going to work. And if they're like, hey, I'm really worried if I fall down the stairs that I'm going to get this deductible now that I didn't have before. And they're like, hey, you can enroll in this accident plan and if you, you know, you break a bone, you get, you know, $400 or $500 to offset your co-pays and expenses. So there's a whole process and I've kind of outlined it somewhat in here, but there's a lot of different ways to do it. But I can definitely get back to you on a fee structure.
Now, do you have any clients that were regional schools that allowed the towns to be part of that?
Not that I can think of, I've heard of it. I know that there's, there's some out there.
As we talked about, possibly Berlin, Boylston and I believe it's Boylston that they only pay like 63%. We pay 75, so, and I think Tohonto pays 75. So that kind of kills that idea, but there's two school systems that are already doing it.
With just the school in one town, a regional school district?
In both towns.
Oh, in both towns.
Does Acton, Foxborough do that?
I know North Row, South Row, and it was one of those. They were both to the school.
And it may, you know, it may be that they need to settle out and then.
Well.
Talk to us, but I think it's something that should be on the table at some point.
Yeah, is it, is it part of your regional school area? And I'm just not, I don't know exactly.
We are just splitting out.
Okay.
From, they just took the elementary school into the region.
Okay.
Which is what made us significantly smaller because many of our employees who are on our plan.
Okay.
Were with the elementary school.
Okay. So I look at it this way, and again, where I've kind of, I haven't been on the exact other side of the table, but I've looked at it from a town's perspective. You're in the same, you got, they're assessing you as part of that. If you can, if they can save you money on health insurance, the money kind of is somewhat, it's separate, but it's part of the same thing. So they might say, hey, we don't, we don't want to pick up the town's health insurance because it's going to cost us more money. But at the end of the day, if you can save money on the health insurance, there's more room for maybe the school budget and you work out something that way.
Well, part of, maybe we put too much emphasis on trying to figure out what diseases people have. And under 100, we can't find out.
Right.
And if we, Boylston and Berlin, Boylston and Berlin combined would be well over 100. And then we could kind of figure out, you know, where do we target, how to get healthy.
Absolutely.
But does that work? You know, it's.
The 100 range gives you a lot of power.
Yeah.
The 1,000 range gives you much more power. And that's why we're, like I said, we're in the process of some Worcester communities looking at joining together to get to that size. But again, yes, at 100, it does make a difference.
Hippo-wise.
Yeah, and again, you're, you're never getting, nobody that's not supposed to be getting any of that information is going to get it. Generally, it's DID and you're going to look at reports, but you'll get claims information, you'll get some inclination of how you're running. Maya should be able to provide you some of that data. So you could, you could at least see what your claims are versus what your premium cost is. And you could provide that to whoever's procuring the school insurance and we're more than happy to talk to them as well. However, you guys would like us to. But that sounds like a pretty natural progression because your premium and everything you're doing is benefiting them and vice versa. So that could be a pretty good potential. It certainly depends on how the benefits line up. And I know there's probably some different benefits at the school level, so that would be a consideration as well.
And it's another place where odd man out or odd woman out. Berlin, I mean, Boylston and Berlin, Boylston have retiree benefits, we don't.
Right.
Keep hearing that all the time, you know, so it's just one more reason to think about it.
Yeah, and we can certainly evaluate, you know, evaluate how that would work.
That affects you, June, right? We have to start putting money aside for the future.
June's going to work here for forever, she's never going to retire.
Crook in our office.
She's got free time on her hands.
That's right.
Handle the.
We'll get you, can you, can you offer us Life Alert? Can you offer us any options with Life Alert? Just asking for a friend.
I mean, we do get into clinical management, but asking for a friend, yes.
Asking for a friend, okay.
So you're going to get me prices?
Yes, yes.
And I don't remember getting them, but we can work it out.
I think I sent you just like a ballpark, but again, we're looking at the retirees and things like that. And just, just so you're aware, and I did mention this to Dennis, we're part of a larger company called Alara Group. So we still operate as lively insurance as we have for a number of years, but we recently got acquired by a company called Alara. So we now have a national footprint. We're part of 65 firms nationally, which is, you know, increasing every day. It's, you know.
Kind of like.
Yep, you know, $350 million company. But again, we're still small, we'll still have smaller office. We, our office is kind of built around municipalities in Massachusetts, so it's kind of a unique niche. But I know everybody probably wants to.
They got a little bit more work to do.
Yeah, we do. Smidge.
Any more questions or?
Good for now, I think.
Thank you.
Well, I really, really appreciate your time, thanks for having me.
Thanks for coming out at night.
Oh.
We appreciate it.
Coming out at night, thanks Anthony.
No problem, I know how it goes. I burn the midnight oil at 12:00 AM meeting, so I know how it goes. Happy to do it. Here's my card.
Make sure Mary gets.
Oh, absolutely. Let me, do you have one of these as well?
I do. So I'll take a spear for, you good?
I think I have something here too, if you need them.
I don't.
Here's a couple of cards for you.
Thanks.
Any questions at all? Even, we don't have to be under contract, I'm a resource for you guys anytime you need it.
I like that, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Dennis.
Thank you.
That was awesome.
I have more info, but I'll send it to you via email from another entity. Similar terms and such, so.
Okay.
They'll work with finances and they're non-broker.
Do you want to stick around while we talk about your job description?
Sure.
I'll talk about you, Dennis.
Our next steps are getting the prices and getting IAC to meet and, because it sounds like this needs to move relatively quickly to have what we need in time, right?
Well, it's a combination of four or five towns. I used the structure of one town and then kind of added things that most people don't realize. Like the no trespassing.
The no what?
The treasurer and the police chief are the two people that can charge someone with trespassing on town property.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
So there.
Really?
Yeah.
So I can't step foot into your garden then, next, this coming summer? Good to know.
Take my peas?
Yeah, that's right. Going to take your peas and your tomatoes.
And I thought it would be good to add all that stuff. The other thing I think in my memo I told you that the town voted back in in the 50s, I believe, that it's really also the town collector.
Yes.
And it's never been taken advantage of. You could collect rescue bills, you'd need more help, but they did it to comply with some law back then, but never, no collector I heard ever did it in the history. Ellie's up to date on that one, but just so you know, it technically is there.
Send us all the assets that you can do for us because of this, huh?
Well, even dog licenses, you know.
Right.
You know, stuff that I think the police chief has to do now or is helping out, so, little things like that.
Okay. Did anybody have any questions, comments for Dennis on the job description?
I think this has gone through multiple, June, you looked at it.
I did the fixes.
Mary looked at it.
It's funny, the town annatic one slipped through. The police chief found out it was what parking he could do. He was a hearing officer, annatic for parking tickets.
Oh, boy.
The fellow, Stephen, that's working for me now.
You get a parking ticket, you get a parking ticket.
He said it's horrible.
Oh, sure.
It's worse than collecting taxes or, you know, arguing over manhole covers.
You got it.
Yeah.
Okay, motion to approve.
Seconded. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So then, do we need to put together a committee? Which I think it's a small committee, an interview committee or anything? Thanks, Dennis.
Oh, thank you.
There's an advertisement there.
There's an ad, which I did read. So we need to get this to personnel first? Or is it just like a, okay?
Obviously you don't want to, but.
The ad, you mean? Goes to personnel first?
Yeah, the ad and the job description.
All right. We need approval of the ad? Did I just, did I see a meeting come in for the personnel committee? I thought I saw something whiz by.
A meeting?
I think so.
Yes.
Yeah.
Wednesday.
I think so, I just saw, I saw like the heading in my email, yeah. So there might be one coming up in the not-so-distant future.
That wasn't coming through on the feed, but I did ask Arthur if he could look.
It's Wednesday.
So how are we? Two days from now? This, no, with this ad.
Wednesday at 6:30.
So can we just give it to them and have them review and approve and then get it out on Thursday? Doesn't move that quick.
They have veterans agent and local building inspector on their stated agenda, but that doesn't, doesn't mean they can't add to it.
Well, that would be nice if they could add it to their agenda.
Yeah.
Does this look okay to everybody?
No, it's not very complicated.
No big deal?
Uh-uh.
All right. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll get that out to them tonight by email.
Okay, and the job description?
Job description and half a check.
Right. Thanks, Mary. All righty. While we're on the subject, we want to talk about the treasurer collector screening committee makeup. And how many people do we have that have volunteered for?
For treasurer collector?
Yeah.
June?
One.
Only one?
Molly, I talked to Molly on the stairs going out and she forgot to do it today.
Yeah.
But she is interested.
I had just mentioned it to June and Molly and Eloise. And I think in this particular case, I think we need the feedback of town employees and who this person's going to work with closely.
Well, someone who's skilled in that area too.
Yeah.
Yeah, like her background.
Do you want to try to get a couple of people from outside too, to round it out or what do you, what are your thoughts?
If we can get June, Eloise and Molly, yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's a pretty dynamite.
Just the three of us?
Yes, but.
Do we need to advertise just for a period of time perhaps and then?
For a volunteer?
Yeah.
For the screening committee?
Yeah.
Why not?
We could advertise within too, maybe there's another person within that would like to be a part of it.
Similar languages before, just put it out there.
Yep. Maybe just by next week?
We want next Tuesday by noon. Got a lot of next Tuesday by noon deadlines.
Tuesdays, do we?
Yeah.
Do we want to like?
Stagger stuff a little bit so Mary doesn't fall to pieces.
Let's push this out, we pushed Dennis out so that we wouldn't have to do this at the speed of light.
Because you can't hire anybody until July 1.
So how about, how about we?
We can't hire the town administrator till then too, we can't. And the fire chief, so they're all going to be hired right around July 1.
So it would be hard, I mean, if you're asking people to.
Volunteer for those.
Apply for a job, you know, a month or two out, I mean.
I think the reason we pushed this was so that we didn't have to do this one.
And also, it may be a difference.
No, of course not, but when is a reasonable time, do you think?
End of the month for advertising for screening committee, no?
Yeah, I mean, yes.
Now, with these three jobs though, some of them, some jobs require like a 60-day notice, like. So it's a good thing. And the fire chief may, I don't know about the treasurer.
Probably not.
I'd say probably a couple of weeks.
Yeah, I don't know how many are.
And you also, I mean, we could potentially, with Dennis, he's not like out the door. So my guess is if you had to extend that once again, we have the ability to put that.
Yeah, unless you hear different.
So I, I'm not panicked about that, I don't think we should rush when we're trying to do these other two things too.
Right, April?
For the date for the screening committee to get feedback, you mean?
No, to even swing everything into play.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just talking about the advertisement for the screening committee.
I would wait on it.
All the same time.
You'd wait on it?
Yeah.
Okay, but, you know, let us know if you get the others to apply.
So holding on advertising?
Okay. Yep. To April.
What do you think April?
March and April, April.
March and.
Crystal circle that with a big old typo, but it says April. March and April, April. All right. To do the legal expenses, like half of seven done. Advertisement, I think we've done all that.
If they approve all this on Wednesday night, then do you need it to rush out to be advertised? No, all of this is going to be held March.
All of this is being held, so they don't need to push, they don't, yeah, they've got plenty of time.
So not just Wednesday, whatever next meeting they might have too?
Exactly.
Oh, wait a minute.
By, by the time we need it.
We have to sign this one. We have to sign this one. This is the special application people. We forgot to have a signature on that.
Oh, for the run-through the town?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I haven't signed these things yet.
All right, yeah. Just start and go through the... Oh, the earthworks advisory. Good thing I'm looking, huh?
It's a good thing you're looking.
Here's another one.
Yay. Okay, here's one. Mr. Paul.
We talked about the general store.
Nothing's on it.
Okay. I think we're down to fiscal year 2020 and outstanding budgets, communication. Unfortunately, the meeting has now been changed to January 31st. So I doubt we'll have a number before then.
It does, huh? They're not even meeting.
Oh, I don't know if they're meeting. They're still scheduled to meet.
Didn't have a quorum last week. It's unclear if they have a quorum this week.
Oh, really, for finance?
Yeah, so we didn't get anything as far as the transcript.
They, they got a boatload of other budgets to look at first.
As far as I know, they haven't looked at any of the budget check officially.
Good. All right, so that one's on hold. Lister Regional, what is it? WRRS? Okay.
No number until late this month or February, early February? Dennis said, huh?
But this is pretty normal, isn't it, both of these things?
This week or next week, I thought we gave them the numbers posted.
And once again, I still don't have any information for legal. Lauren said she's gonna call me after 3 o'clock on Friday. Never happened. I sent her another email. I sent another, two emails that I copied Mary on just to prove I'm doing this.
Call her directly.
Yeah.
I have called her.
Oh, have you? Because I was gonna say, I had really good luck getting ahold of her when she was doing this.
Well, you know, there is this item coming up on January 18th. We could, just saying.
Lauren!
Just saying.
I know what she looks like too, because she's at the selectmen training or the, the thing I went to.
There you go. It's coming Friday from 9:00 PM to 11:00 PM in the Republic Ballroom.
She did say that they do, they do retainers, however, it wouldn't include yeah, particular issues, which would be billed in addition to, which would be like
So it'd be like open space?
Capes of Berlin as an ongoing?
No, it's, it would be labor relations is the one thing that would also be an additional, in addition to the retainer. It would be like charging a certain amount per month. She sent this in an email and I'm like, well, okay, what is the number and call me back or answer me and haven't gotten any.
Is it a discount? Or a better deal, if you do a retainer for X amount of hours, or is it just, here's a pot of money?
My questions, yeah.
Here's a pot of money, I'm just gonna k-k-k-k every time I call you?
That's the information I'm looking for.
Okay.
So, don't have any answers for you. The treasurer-collector budget, were we going to relook at this?
Did he send the?
Full-time salary now is up to 75. 75, 420 instead of at 67, I think it was before, correct? I'm pretty sure.
67 was the ad.
67 plus.
Oh, 67 plus, okay.
Right.
And this is the issue with, we were trying to get a budget number so that if we have to hire somebody, this is actually the 75 is the is actually what personnel came up with.
I think personnel actually had 76.
Or it was, or 70?
I think it was a little bit higher than that. He didn't go all the way.
Well, it's 75.
I don't remember what it was, but they, they had based it on the wrong number of hours essentially. So their number was too low, so.
So it's either, I can't read it. Is it 75, 920 or 75, 420?
Yeah, it's on, it's on a second sheet that he has.
Looks like a nine. Nine.
All right. Okay. So, are we good with this?
And then he had also fixed, somebody had 80s had been up to...
Changing the wage for minimum wage from 12 to 1275 at the mid-year point.
Okay.
Right?
Because she's, she currently usually starts off at a work off.
So CD?
So she won't getting actual pay until after.
She burned through the work off hours.
January, yeah.
Right. Looks like an additional $1,117.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
This is something we can't sign yet. All righty. I think we did all those. The town administrator executive recruitment firm interviews, just as far as the public's concerned, do you want to just tell us when they are?
MRI will be in at 7:10 next week and Community Paradigm will be in at 8 o'clock.
Okay.
Did we make a decision what we're gonna do with the other one?
That was kind of up to you guys, because I didn't want to bring them in.
Well, I kinda had to laugh because there was a typo in one of the presentations tonight, so, you know, I thought of you. I'm starting to channel you.
Well, it's, there's typos and then there's typos.
Yeah.
I mean, a few typos is, is okay. Okay, our whole numbering scheme is wrong and we didn't notice that.
Well, did we find out why, what happened?
Well, I got a couple of other things too. I wanted to bring this up just so you could see what happens when you go to their website.
Oh, yeah.
Whoops.
Yeah. So it's not just, it's like, it's a combination of things.
Yeah, no, I agree. I'm good with the two.
Yeah.
You too?
There was, there was an odd thing that I read. See, look, remember the sheet that I told you I had last week that I got left at home? I put it in a bag. There was an, something that just struck me as odd that the company that may not come in, that they were saying, you know, people don't want to do a second interview unless they get the job. They don't want to do it on camera. And I'm thinking, if I'm bucking for a job, I'll cartwheel down the hall if I have to. I mean, that was just an odd thing to say of you don't want to put them on an interview on camera because unless you're guaranteeing the job, they're not gonna want to take it. And I'm thinking...
Finalists won't, will be on camera, but the others before that, they won't because sometimes they're, they're concerned about the situation they're in and making waves over there. So that's pretty now, that's pretty normal.
Yeah.
That just be, the other two, see, the ones in red, there are differences. The other two didn't say it, so I think that's why it struck me as standard.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a part of a mass general law.
I, I think there was a thing about executive session and screening committees where it said it's fine for the screening committee to do their first interviews in executive session.
And I think too, like with their timeline, they gave a period of 18 weeks, but there wasn't any specific details where the other ones were like week one.
In general, the presentation did not have
The flow.
The flow or the detail.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm kinda glad that I just randomly picked that one last because I think it would have discouraged me from reading the other two. So, yeah, I'm okay with just two.
Okay.
And the other two, the interactions have been very professional.
All right.
Oh, do we know cost? Are we allowed to know cost or?
They will...
Do we want to wait until we?
Talk to both of them?
Yeah, we probably need the interview first.
Swag, okay.
Right.
All right.
This is the screening committee.
Do you want me to respond to halfway about their question about why they didn't get an interview since they asked or?
Yeah, if you want to.
Okay.
Where are we here? I think we're down to the local building inspector job description if I'm correct. Mary drafted an advertisement.
Well, can we talk about the description first? So I think the first thing that struck me, and maybe I just don't remember and fell asleep during a meeting. When did we give Joe the building commissioner title?
We did not.
That's his legal title.
But we haven't given it to him as the town, correct?
That's correct. It's been a long discussion about this. Pre-dates Joe.
Really?
Yeah.
I mean, I guess I...
His schooling, I believe, makes him a building commissioner. I don't...
Yeah, but he's not a building commissioner for
At this point in time?
At this point in time. You know, his job description, I don't think says building commissioner, so
We don't have a job description for a building commissioner.
So I'm just, I'm just hesitant. I don't want someone to come in and be like, hey, you're not a building commissioner, you're a blah blah blah. I don't have to listen to you. You're just a building inspector. I, I don't think it will come to that point, but I have concerns.
Well, I think you just need to be accurate in the job description.
So then that would need to change.
Well, for now, it would be building inspector, but this is, this is titled a local building inspector.
Right, but I'm just talking about the first line, the local inspector, blah blah blah, under the direction of the building commissioner. We technically don't have one.
Right.
Do you want to just officially change the title since that's actually what he legally is?
Well, what's the implications of changing the title?
Yeah, job description, additional duties, more money. I don't, I don't want to get like sucker punched into it.
I don't think that's it. I think just he calls himself a building commissioner because that's the, that's what his, his training makes him. It's, it's a definition of what...
Well, but if you go and apply for a building inspector job, even though you have the credentials to be a building commissioner, I don't think they're gonna call you the building commissioner if you're hired, correct?
I, I'm not sure.
I mean, I think we need to know the implications.
A lot of, a lot of that stuff I know is, is outlined in the Massachusetts code, so my impression has always been that by code, he was a building commissioner because he had X, Y, and Z, but, you know, that's a conversation we could certainly have with him. I don't think it's, I, I think it just is what he is.
And do we, can someone help me? How much are we potentially paying for this position-ish?
That, I think, has to be approved by personnel.
But what was the range? Because my reason for asking is that I, as I was whizzing around, see, and more documents I had in my briefcase last week, laptop that I remembered to pull, was that I'm seeing ranges from 52 to 60 for like large towns, 54 to 70, 80, $40 an hour.
Remember, I think it was 50.
Yeah, I thought it was 50 also.
Okay.
And I thought he had done comps, but...
Was that full-time or half-time or, it must have been
I don't know.
Half-time? Or being full-time?
I want to say for the full-time budget, I think it was. And I think that's what he hit said originally.
Isn't his budget in there? I thought it was 80.
I mean, and there was some...
Well, it's 40 hours a week at 3970.
So it's 3970.
So 3970, so $40.
Pretty much, four times four.
I think in Wiki verbally said that 50 when he was throwing around numbers, I guess, originally, I don't know.
It's off the grid, but it, that probably doesn't really matter. It's not something you classify as great and stuff. It would just be off the grid.
I mean, I just want to make sure that we're in alignment. I mean, I looked at job descriptions. I went big, like Washington DC. I looked at, well, no, because you know what? I don't, like here was one in Florida.
Massachusetts is very different than these other places. And right now, we're having a shortage of building inspectors, so that also plays a role.
Yeah, I mean, this one here had a starting salary for a building inspector one of 32, 978, a building inspector two of 37.7, and a three of 39. That was Florida.
So that's...
I know, but I, I know that's Florida. But there were some, in some of the, the job, and I don't know if they're, if they're enough to put in here, but they had talked about, you know, even though the job of the building inspector is to make sure that you're all codes, coded up, that it doesn't specifically say that you're going to document all building codes. I didn't know how nitty-gritty you wanted to get down in that, or if there was going to be a responsibility for this local building inspector to also do window hours, you know, that Joe's not doing, that we offer additional window hours. And I know one of, one of the issues had come up. Where is, if we're talking customer service, do you specifically put in there, advise the public on how to achieve code compliance and conduct special investigations, and you may have to go to court and you counsel other inspectors, so I just don't know how.
Just keep in mind that the initial hiring is gonna only be for River Bridge until possibly July 1st. If it's approved at town meeting, then it will become full-time. Currently, we just received the check in the mail.
I saw that.
In today. So the, the hiring right now is only part-time for River Bridge. They're not gonna be doing any other
Stuff.
At least that's what he said.
It's a total of 83,000 less an NRP contribution of 42,000. So the total, the building inspector would be paid 83,000 at the 39, at 40 dollars an hour.
This is, this has gotta go to personnel.
That seems way high. I mean, the difference between what the, and I will put it in here quotes, commissioner is being paid versus a local building inspector? You're not talking much of a difference. To me, one would seem way lower than the other. That, that seems way high.
I don't know. I'm not a personnel person. That's what personnel...
I know, I know, so we will...
Aren't you glad you're not?
All right.
All right.
So why don't we have Joe go to
Personnel?
Personnel and work out what they think is appropriate. Does this sound like a plan?
Yep. I mean, I don't even know. It's, the information will be sent. Whether he has to go, that's, you know, it's fine, but he doesn't have to go.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful for them to know where he got his numbers from and him to know where their numbers are from and come to a...
Started looking.
Yeah.
They may have already.
So...
Who, who has started looking?
Uh, personnel.
For?
Rates.
Oh.
So they are, may already have the information.
I've gotten so many now that I...
That came from personnel.
So they've already done research?
Yeah. I remember seeing it at some point.
Yeah, I thought so, but I...
A lot of this stuff has been flying lately, so.
Yep.
So what are they coming up with?
Um, anyways, from 67 to 89. It's in Bedford.
So to send that ad over, you might want to put an amount...
The hours vary. Some are 40, some are 35, some are 30, 36, 35, 90, 35.
Well, if you're putting in a dollar amount per hour, I mean, that's most important.
Right, but this is just, it just has minimum and maximum.
Yeah.
No, they figured out hours for the employees. They didn't break it down by, you have this, right, Ted?
No, I'll lean over on Chris's.
It just, it doesn't break it up into hour hours.
Oh, yeah, I've seen this.
Oh, yeah, I've seen it.
Yeah.
But it, it isn't gonna be
It's not gonna be that long.
40 hours.
Well, it would be in July.
Right.
Maybe.
Which is why your budget at 83,000 is...
How big is Bedford?
Bedford's pretty big.
Bedford's big.
That's what I thought.
And it's got a lot of
Issues?
Oh, yeah. I wasn't gonna say that. I was gonna say stuff.
So it's approximately 32, 35 an hour is what their starting pay is, an hour for 40 hours in Bedford.
And he's proposing 39 for a community that's way smaller.
To 42, 86 is what their pay range is there.
But that's on the high side, probably years of experience, et cetera.
Well, what we need to know is the hourly rate that personnel's recommending then. I guess, particularly for the first six months.
Well, like the...
Until the person is hired.
They may need to just slide the classification line into the
Right.
Step sheet and provide us with that maybe.
All right, so we're putting this...
Which they should be able to do from this.
So another one on the agenda.
Putting this back on the agenda?
You're gonna have to. They're gonna have to talk to personnel, or we're gonna have to talk to personnel.
Even the job description.
Yeah.
All right.
The job description, I think, was mainly taken from the, I think he might have pulled that almost directly from state building code, but...
So I guess we're putting those on hold.
Okay, job description and advertisement?
Yep.
What they can, Personnel can look at.
See, this will teach Personnel not to come to our meetings.
You want this to go to Personnel? They usually are approved by the appointing authority before they go to Personnel. Do you wanna hold this, or do you want it to go to Personnel?
We'll hold on the job description.
So we're holding that completely here? They're not gonna look at it, or?
They, do they, we generally approve first and then Personnel. Okay.
So you're holding it?
Yep.
Okay.
And, um, I mean, I can, I can talk to him about it, the commissioner part of it, and find out what the deal is. All right, the Town Hall Advisory Committee. I had sent you the job description for the Town Hall, eighteen-seventy Town Hall Manager.
Do they have any issues with a.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I did, I did go to their meeting. Um, we had a good meeting. They helped me, went through the job description and then sent me feedback, which I implemented into the job description. They also showed me a budget that they had put together. It was probably a month or so ago, but it was basically the costs, the costs that, um, they were thinking that they would be using in the next year, um, that they would be paying from revolving account, about sixteen thousand five hundred fifty-six. Um, the cleaning service was to be determined, and expenses from municipal. The cleaning service and the custodian are sort of questioned at this point. And so fuel, oil, electric cable, and some of these other things will all be paid for from municipal. They did anticipate about twenty to twenty-five thousand income projected for FY twenty.
Nice.
So we'll see.
The end said things were going really well.
Yeah.
Good, 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 good.
And, um.
Did you send that out to everybody? Cause I never did see that go out to everybody.
Uh, no, I made copies, cause I forgot to send it out to everybody. Sorry. Actually, I have an extra one. Did you want one? Oh, she did, okay. Oh geez. All right, um, let's see if I missed anything here with, uh, oh, and I had told them that, um, the job description would, would most likely not go into effect until FY twenty. But if we wanna send it to Personnel, that's fine. And they would like, they would like to continue in their advisory, as the advisory committee for the time being. And perhaps we, we, we revisit it, like next fall, when we start the budget process again. Um, they're also doing prep for their open house for the new elevator project, which will be April thirteenth from one to three PM. They're going to have music and cookies and coffee.
Cookies.
Just so you know. And notices will be going out soon. I mean, not real soon, but soon.
So do you want, you want the job description to go over to Personnel?
Personnel. Sure. All right. So now we're down to preparation for the January seventeenth Selectmen's Coffee Talk. January seventeenth. What'd we say? Seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock. It's on the blinky sign. Seven o'clock.
Oh, good.
I know he put it up even before I asked. I was impressed when I came around the rotary. Like, yeah, go Dave.
All right, so do we need to do anything else before that?
Just make sure we have coffee and snacks.
Okay.
Do you want snacks?
I can, I, I was gonna pick up cookies or something.
Drink coffee at that time of night.
I can order it for cookies.
Oh, what about coffee?
Snickerdoodles.
Are you making them? Willie's gonna make them? See?
Very cool. Thank you. I might pick up a little something else too, just so that the.
Chocolate chips.
Chocolate chip?
Chocolate chip.
For, that you want me to pick up?
No, he'll make, he said he'd make two different kinds.
Oh, so I don't need to pick up any?
It's up to you.
Coffee. Well, we can make coffee there.
We'll make coffee there.
Okay.
It's okay. I would then just have to pee and, you know.
Yeah.
All right.
And you don't need to bring the easel. I mean, I think between the three of us, like we did last time.
We have this easel now.
I know, but I don't wanna stand up and draw on it. No, it's fine. It's fine.
All right.
I think we're good. We'll just do like we did last time and huddle around and take notes and pull them together. Very excited.
All right, are we good?
Yeah.
Other new business?
Actually, when Dennis and I were talking, we were chatting about the River Bridge Agreement and the fact that it's changed significantly since it started, and there were several different, you know, things that were supposed to trigger at different points and, um.
I've actually read them all, because I've been, you know, working with River Run.
Yeah. I was wondering, um, Bill Tomasino, this is kind of a thing for him. I was wondering if he would be amenable to, like, putting together an executive summary for us and a, like, timeline of when things should trigger and different things.
For just that, or?
For just the River Bridge Agreement. For just, like, summarizing, like, what's supposed to happen when and.
There's been some, there's been some amendments to the agreement, and so I'm not sure that anything, the la, I think I read it like last fall. And I don't think there's anything right now, because when we've changed the agreement at town meeting, I believe we pushed things out.
Yeah, but wouldn't it be nice to have something where we could, like, put it on the calendar so that when something is, or, or when something's triggered, or when we need to look at stuff? And, um, like I said, it's an area of interest for him, so I thought it might be nice to have him do that for us.
He can. He has to make sure he's got the most recent, um, document.
Phil's on the ball, and this is a thing for him, so I think it would be valuable.
If he wants to volunteer.
He, yeah, well, after Dennis.
Or did you volunteer? Volunteled him.
Dennis and I talked, and then I wrote him a note and said, hey, would you be interested in doing something like this? Because it is very complicated, and, you know, I don't think we wanna go read it, you know, on a yearly basis, because it's.
I did.
Well, congratulations. And do you, how much do you remember from what you read last fall?
Actually, I remember quite a bit.
Okay. Anyways, I think it would be valuable, and he said he'd do it, so.
Okay.
If you are amenable, I will say please.
Okay with that?
Um, it was okay. All righty.
And I have, um, Tricia Concanon, um, has been trying to get the Town Report Committee together, but they're having a little trouble getting them together. And last year, I had to send over all the reports, because I was the only one who had access to the email. And, um, can we give her permission to get access to the email so that I don't have to send the reports over to Lori?
Uh, uh, explain to me.
What reports?
Um, we have an email address called townreports@gmail.com, where people send their reports. I'd like to give Tricia access to that so that she can send them to Lori rather than me having to send them to Lori, cause Lori compiles the report.
Who was doing this before?
Uh, Barry was, but I don't know that he ever actually got access after Gmail switched over, um, last year. Because I had to send them all over last year, because nobody else could do it.
That was the access given to the ATR Committee email to Lisa by the chief.
But there was no, I mean, we needed to get the report put together, so.
So is this, does Lori have access? Does?
Lori does not have access. I don't know if Barry has access at this point, but the reports are gonna start coming in on the twenty-first, and Lori's going to need them. And I had recommended that she get access last year, and she never quite managed to get it. Tricia is technically savvy enough that she can, if you give her the password and the.
So what do we have to do to do this?
Just tell Tom Galvin that as a board, we give her permission, and give him permission to give her access.
Okay.
So that she can.
Tricia wants to run with it. Off she goes.
Okay.
Okay.
Will she do approve?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is this yours?
So.
I noticed in the, um, email, I believe it was from Chief Galvin about the website, that we need to vote on a website point person. And I was gonna suggest that Mary be the point person.
Huh. You really were, huh? Without even telling Mary.
Well, let me, don't you do the, this?
No.
No? Okay.
So with all the volunteers and yada yada, many of them don't even see the importance of doing their meeting minutes, never mind updating their content, so.
This is just for our board.
This is just us.
Just our board.
It's not the whole site. It's just us.
Take it back, fine.
You'll do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought we were talking about the other email today where I sent out, just kinda giving a, a global warming. I don't even have access to everyone's email contact, so if you're talking about just the board's content, no problem.
That should be easier, easier than dealing with Garth, right?
Also, would you, would you all have access, or just myself? Don't care.
I don't think I need it.
Okay, just direct me, and then, that's fine.
Well, there'll be training, like, I think it was.
I was gonna go to that training.
Yeah, I was gonna try and go too, just because, but, um.
Yeah, cause I know, I know Chief Galvin wrote back, um, I just didn't have time to read it, of the issues that I saw with the website, and I know that men, much of it was just like copied over.
Right.
But I just wanna make sure.
It's accurate.
It's accurate, you know, committee, like.
All those pictures are Marty's, so they're all Berlin.
Even the one that's the gorgeous brick building that has this, where is it?
Ask him.
Which one? The one with all the flowers?
No, that's a house, but there's one when you go to like pay the bill.
Oh, Unibank. Unibank is not our, we have nothing to do, you're spinning off to another website.
Website, that's their.
So you're bridging out, so it's not, okay.
That's not us.
Cause I saw that and went, awesome building. Where is it?
I know, it's Unibank.
That's Unibank. Okay.
It's up there now. On our website, we link to Unibank. It's the same picture.
I think so.
Okay, all right. So do we need to approve that, the site? Is there a sign-off? I don't know. Was there a sign-off? Is there a sign-off?
It's basically all the information is ported over from the old one.
I don't know. It's been an ongoing thing for over a year, I think, now.
Who has ultimate control over that? Cause like some of the issues that I saw, like with the softball that wasn't there, or old information, like the garden that had twenty-fifteen information.
The boards and committees, like the agricultural commission.
That's all theirs?
There's a lot of boards and committees that don't have a page up there.
We don't actually, well, we have the webmaster, but it's not up to him to.
Right.
Tinker.
Content for each individual committee belongs to them.
I send him updates for my webpage. So it'd be up to the department that, to keep their.
To own it.
Information up to date.
Okay.
And one of the, one of the things we're really hoping is that because boards and committees can do their own content update with this, that we will have more up-to-date information on there.
But at least their mission charge can be up there as you create these committees, you know what I mean? So there's not absolutely nothing in a, in a contact email, if you have nothing else.
Yeah, people are looking into if they'd like to volunteer, or, yeah.
All right, cool, yeah.
All right, so did I make the motion?
No, don't make the mo, what motion?
For the point person.
Thought you were gonna, like, close this down. A second.
Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye. Thanks, Mary.
Thanks for volunteering me.
You're welcome.
I figured you were doing this stuff anyway.
You are, I mean, you put together all the content.
Didn't know what you were talking.
No, no.
It just removes the middleman. You can stop sending multiple emails.
Oh, God, no.
Wow. That's the other duties as required on the bottom of the description. That's like in point eight font.
She didn't see that, yes.
Yeah, I know, okay.
All right. Uh, did you have any old business? Or, I mean, new business?
Well, I just have questions on the fire. Um, did the second RFP come in today? Did any?
No.
We just have one?
One.
Oh, and the man lied to me. Okay. Uh, but they're due next week, so not worried. Are we getting, um, how are we doing on the volunteer committee?
For fire?
For fire.
Nine.
Really?
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Well, I thought you were gonna say that's all?
Did you put a category thing together, you know?
What do you mean?
What kinda people we're looking for to?
Mary stole yours.
Okay, okay.
What, did I?
For the screening committee? Didn't we just, like, steal leases from?
Yeah, administrator and the B C M one, use the treasure and clever, actually.
Right.
Kinda open-ended on the number, reach out and express interest.
Is Mr. Pentecost on it? Just wondering. Awesome.
Well, he's number nine.
Is he? He turned it in today?
Yeah.
I love Mr. Pentecost. And do we have any applicants for the actual?
Yes, uh, eight.
Oh, my goodness. Really? Another good thing that I caught myself with the camera on. Thank you very much. Really? Eight? That's fabulous. Okay.
Wow.
All right. And then, uh, I just had.
Firefighters?
No.
Yeah.
No, no, most are.
Yeah, I just, I just remember some of the things for the.
When things go to zip recruiter, it ends up being a lot of people just try and fulfill their unemployment requirement of flipping out, um, three resumes a week. But that's not the case here, that most of them are actually.
Qualified.
In the business.
Nice. And then last Friday, I had the honor of going to the bullet house. Lisa took pity on me, saw, saw me sitting on the step and drove by and, and came with me.
After I accidentally went to the dentist appointment. That's next Friday.
It's, you know what? There's such.
Yeah, I've been there, done that.
Yeah. To me, there's such a great story about that building, you know, the history of the building. And then, of course, I stopped participating on the tour, because there were just boxes of old pictures that just like sucked me in, and you're going through, and you're looking at old Berlin people and different town, you know, the items that were going on in the town and the different plates and cups that were just stored. And you wanna get the story out, but what I kept asking, and I wasn't getting an answer, was, what's your timeline? You know?
Was this, was Barry there?
Yeah.
I hadn't mentioned him, so that's.
Yes, no, Barry was there, um, Elaine.
Wickstrom, who was there.
Dave, Lisa, who took pity on me, Smith. And it's, I kept asking, so what do you need from us? What is the timeline? Because obviously, you know, you look outside and there's some clad boards that are kinda pulled away, and windows that need some help. But I couldn't get the, by June, we wanna fix the clad boards. By July, we wanna fix the windows. By, cause without that story, you're never going to fix the building.
Right.
You're never going to get the town's interest in that. And that's why they showed us some little shoe that they found when they were digging up the floor, which is part of something that goes up and down the coast, and I'm thinking, this is the crap that people wanna know about, but there's no mechanism to get it out there.
Yeah.
That's what I, I struggled with. What do you need from us?
So are we still good for the, um, request of a hundred thousand?
I guess, I mean, you know, Mr. Agar was a little bit adamant that, you know, he didn't need public money, and everything was gonna be done through volunteers and stuff with the historical committee commission and, I mean, even something like this that he provided, which is a nice, which is a nice little story, but again, it's.
Well, the problem is it's a story. It's not actual timeline or, um, specifications.
It's about the house?
It's about the house.
That was submitted for the mitigation money they got for the kitchen and bath.
I was gonna ask you, he mentioned something about, there was some plan that he had delivered to the old Board of Selectmen, the previous Board of Selectmen about this?
Was this it?
That?
No.
Or is it with the special article request?
He said there was something else.
Like a timeline of events?
The plans for the bathroom in the kitchen?
I thought it was bigger than that.
I don't know how many pages you have there. There's like twenty-eight pages to that, if you have it all.
Do we get the?
Ten?
Bathroom and kitchen done?
No, 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 no.
I didn't think so.
No, we do.
I didn't think so, but, you know.
No, this is mainly.
Nobody wanted to touch it, because they don't know what they're gonna find.
Elaine Wickstrom visited last week, and she wanted to understand, and maybe it's up to the board to clarify this. I told her that I thought it was the board's collective agreement that you would not be doing the kitchen and the bath until you came up with a comprehensive plan for the building, which enraged her. So I'm not sure, if I was speaking correctly and I said, stop, then you need to talk to the board for clarification as to whether the kitchen and bath all by itself can go forward.
But he was talking about the bathroom, and that there's issues, like the outside wall, the foundation. They don't know what's there, so.
That would be something you'd wanna tackle first, then.
I would think you wanna tackle, yeah, the whole, like, outside.
You should all, if you haven't been inside that building, you need to be inside that building.
It is, it's, it's sad, cause you know, upstairs, there was a room, and it was, well, we started to do something with the ceiling, so we took down some of the insulation, but we never finished it, so we don't heat it, because it'll go right out the window, so we just shut the door.
Well, that's kind of, that's kinda what happens when you use volunteers, I think, sometimes.
That's why I kept asking, what do you need us to do? What is your timeline when things are gonna get done and? That's why I kept asking, what do you need us to do, what is your timeline, when things are gonna get done, and unfortunately, and maybe, cause I left eleven, I needed to boogie home, that's what I wanted to come out of that meeting, and I didn't, I got a great history, but I didn't get any deliverables, and that's what I was looking for.
Okay.
I was cautiously optimistic, um, they are going through, and organizing, and doing some of the cataloging, and things that weren't happening before, so there is some progress being made, so it wasn't all.
But, yeah, no, I'm, I, as I said, I'm glad that I went, but I don't think we're any further along than where we were, than where we have been with the house.
You, are you going to follow up with this?
I can follow up with Elaine or Mr. Egger, and find out what's going on, I mean, you know, cause he had talked about parking, and I'm thinking, parking is a secondary item.
Right.
Fix the building, fix, fix the whole-
I think people in time would like to see this building.
I mean, Dave and I were walking around, and there's, there's a nice big gully in the front lawn, right, there's a gully in the front lawn that Dave hit, and I'm like, ooh, well, that needs to be fixed, um, you know, type of thing.
Is it, um, does it, uh, have a, an occupancy permit?
No.
The last attempt to do that was three years ago, for a Christmas time in Berlin, I, they may have been given a temporary-
Day.
For one day, and that was it, and it, that was actually granted against Larry's will.
Well, I think the goal should be an occupancy permit, so that the people in town can actually get into and see the building.
Have you been in?
You can't, you can't have people-
You've been in, Lisa?
We were in on Friday, that's what we were talking about, yeah.
Wasn't Joe gonna go and make sure that-
He did.
Joe did go.
He did, and, and Mr. Egger had some issues with the report, cause he was saying that it was noted on the report about a fire alarm system, and you looked in every room, and it was up, so, maybe the, it needs to be revisited, I mean, there were great things, there was an old radio in there, it looked like there was a old piano in there, with beautiful woodwork, but you needed to get everything out of the way.
So you could see it.
To see it, and it was just-
A lot of the stuff that's not in the basement here, um, from the curatorial, is in the Bullard House, so it's a-
It's kind of a shame, though, that it's all in the curatorial or downstairs. Well, they ultimately wanna rotate stuff in and out, and put it on display.
Oh, absolutely, and I think that they should.
And deciding what to keep and what needs to go, which is a, is a big step forward.
There were, I counted fifteen doors in one room.
What, oh, saved doors.
Well, they've been collecting doors from houses that go down here, with the hopes that they will fit in the doorways in the Bullard House, so there are many, many, many doors, and, um, various other things to-
Mantles.
Yeah, everything.
Windows.
And it's just, it's almost like you'd have to take everything out and fix it, instead of fixing this room, shift, fix this room, shift, you're constantly-
Total cost, what's it gonna cost to get it up to code, so you can at least open it to public, and then we could piece me away if we had to, maybe.
Correct, you know, different parts of the building, we're built here, we're built there.
The truth of the matter is that the historical society actually has control of the building, so, or historical commission has control of the building, we own the property, but we don't own the building, so it really is on the historical commission, other than the funds that, um, were allocated at town meeting, as to what happens, and in what order it happens, or, we have no control over that, so.
But it is, again, I said, it's got a great, it's a great building with a great story, and right now, I don't, just don't think it'll ever be told.
Maybe some goals, talk about goals with the historical commission.
Yeah, I mean, that's, it's, you know, when you're round Berlin, and you come on that corner, that's the first building that you see.
Right.
And it needs to be a building that you're proud of, not, oh, who is, but that's just me, being an, an old person in the town. Not saying I'm old.
You're not saying you're old.
Not saying that I'm old.
Course not.
Old things-
Resident, resident, an old resident of the town. Listen.
Oh, boy, alright, I got one more thing, so I had a, uh, a call from Chief Z today, concerned about, um, the pond over at the South Common, because people are ice skating on it, and there's a big area that's not hard.
Doesn't surprise me.
I listened to an ambulance call today.
Was Boston, Boston? Somebody went in?
No, I can't remember what town it was now, somebody was ice skating on the, and they went through, so there was a rescue going on, I didn't-
Do we need to put caution signs up?
Well, that was his question, whether we need to look into some kind of signage, that, you know, we try, or, or, or skate at your own risk, or-
Oh, I wouldn't even-
Probably just danger, ice could be-
Ice thin.
Ice is, I mean, it would-
Is this considered an ice skating place?
The town pond?
Yeah, I'm just asking.
Yeah, you skate on it, actually, the snowmobiles drive right through the middle of it, which kinda makes it hard to ice skate on it, da, 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 but, yeah.
I said to them, I only have thirty-five years of knowledge about the South Common, so-
We used to actually flood our, our basketball court, and you couldn't fall through the water into that, I wonder if that's something that we could do instead of-
I mean, I don't think that that pond is all that deep, but still, with all the cr-.
And in, in this type of weather, though, it's still ice cold.
Correct.
Yeah, and if you can't get out, yeah.
It's deep enough to kill you.
Yeah?
Yeah.
So do you put up a fence around it, with signs all over the fence, no trespassing?
Well, I mean, I think if you put up-
I think a sign is the first, I think this, the first thing we need to do is some kind of signage, and, um, not sure if that would be the-
Town council.
Town council, I was thinking planning board, or-
Yeah, but town council to make sure what we put up on the sign doesn't leave the town wide open to a-
Right, right.
Or Maya. You could check up on Maya.
We could start with Maya.
Yeah.
Maya does it for-
Could you send an email to Maya, just to inquire?
Just volunteer myself. Yeah, you did.
I would've volunteered, yeah.
Especially where it's gonna get colder this weekend, you know, when you don't know, and I would hate for a, uh, snowmobile to go whizzing over it, and it'd go-
Do you want this to just proceed with a higher recommendation?
Well, they usually drill, and see how far they can go down, like an ice, like ice fishing.
Yes.
Possibly with a sign?
To see how thick it is.
And who would make the sign, highway?
Yeah, I would think so, we just need the language.
Yeah.
Alright, I got a, another one, I went to a FinCom meeting last week, unfortunately, there was no quorum, um, so the reserve fund transfer for legal will be voted on at the next meeting, which I don't believe will be an issue. We, we kinda met and talked anyway, but, and, and I think the fire chief was there, and the police chief was there to talk to them about their budgets, but they couldn't do any voting or anything. And one of the suggestions, when I was there, from Dave Westerling, was that another person that we might wanna contact to talk to about the ADA for the doors, would be Beezy Benson, since she's on the, I believe, the ADA committee in town.
There is no more ADA committee, it's Joe.
It's Joe?
Yeah.
Oh.
But nonetheless-
But she has the knowledge, too, she does, I believe she, her, her work entails that kind of thing, so I just wanted to, I didn't know if you wanted to, yeah, reach out and see if she had any suggestions, or-
I have an email for her, do you want me to give it to you?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay, and I believe that's all I got, anybody else? Are we good? Alright, um, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.